Again, this planned commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note, customers of the Central Link can view this program in high definition on channel one, 1002. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Present.
Vice Chair Cherry?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Flengas?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Here.
Commissioner Creer?
Here.
Thank you.
I'll call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions in the pill and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, at the second page of the agenda contains the rules of the contact, uh, conduct. We appreciate your adherence to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. The agendas are over on the corner of, both corners of the half walls up here, if you'd like to grab it. Number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time any speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made underneath this item for specific items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public wish, who wish to be heard under this portion of the agenda? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Moving on to item five, for possible action to approve the final minutes for the planned commission meeting of December thirteenth, 2016, it looks like staff is gonna request this to be held in abeyance to the February fourteenth, 2017 planned commission meeting. Can we get a motion, Vice Chair?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to obey the approval of the minutes to the February fourteenth planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries. Item six, for possible action, any items from the planned commission staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. So, are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, staff would, as far as the housekeeping, item number fifty-one, GPA six-eight-three-five-eight, or six-eight-three-eight-five, sorry. The applicant has requested this item be held in abeyance to the February fourteenth, 2017 planning commission meeting.
Mr. Garcia?
Chairman Commissioners, George Garcia, ten fifty-five, Whitney Ranch Drive, pleasure to be before you. I have a letter that was provided to staff, and we requested that our item number forty-four be held until the, until the March meeting, which would be the fourteenth of March. So, for item forty-four.
Okay, and not forty-five, just forty-four?
Oh, forty-five, excuse me, yes.
Forty-four and forty-five?
Yes, both.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak on these items, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ms., Vice Chair Cherry?
Through the chair, we'll make a motion on item forty-four and forty-five to hold that to abeyance until March fourteenth, 2017 planning commission meeting, and item fifty-one to the February fourteenth, 2017 planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. Now moving on to the one motion, one vote, the following items that may, may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine and non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing, non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll be pulling item number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Okay, starting off with item number seven, abeyance waiver six-seven-four-two-five, applicant ninety-five Management LLC, owner Section Twelve LLC, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow an eighty-four-foot internal intersection offset where a hundred and twenty-five feet is the minimum required at the northwest corner of Grand Teton Drive and Sky Village Road, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. Number eight, abeyance TMP six-seven-three-six-six for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a hundred lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward Six Ross. Staff recommends approval. Number nine, TMP six-seven-eight-eight-nine, applicant owner, Devarium Eighteen LLC and United States, or United Capital Investments LLC, for possible action on a request for tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision on the south side of Owens Avenue between H Street and J Street, Ward Five Barlow. Staff recommends approval. I am going to go ahead and skip over ten through fourteen and move on to item number fifteen, GPA six-seven-nine-one-three, applicant owner, Las Vegas, Clark County Library District, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from M Medium Residential, or Density Residential to public facilities at the southeast corner of Bonanza Road and Twenty-Eighth Street, Ward Three Coffin. Staff re- recommends approval. Number sixteen, ZON six-seven-nine-one-four, for possible action on a request for rezon from R Three Medium Density Residential to CV Civic, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item number seventeen, SDR six-seven-nine-one-five, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight square foot library, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item number eighteen, VAR six-seven-eight-zero-one, applicant owner, Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a four-foot side yard setback where five feet is the minimum required at eleven-seventy-six Hassel Avenue, Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. Item number nineteen, SUP six-seven-eight-zero-zero, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a church house of worship at eleven-seventy-six and eleven-eight-nine Hassel Avenue, Ward Five Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Item number twenty, SDR six-seven-eight-zero-two, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed nineteen-hundred-and-ninety-one square foot expansion to an existing church house of worship with a waiver to allow a one-foot perimeter landscape buffer along portions of the east and west property lines of eleven-seventy-six Hassel Avenue, Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-one, VAR six-seven-nine-two-eight, applicant THM Enterprises, Inc., owner Touchstone Loan Mountain LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an eighty-seven foot lot width on Lot Three of a proposed four-lot subdivision where a hundred feet is required at the southeast corner of Hickam Avenue and Giuliano Road, Ward Four. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-two, VAR six-seven-nine-two-nine, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow eighty-seven foot lot width on Lot Four of a proposed four-lot subdivision where a hundred feet is required, Ward Four. Staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-three, SUP six-seven-eight-eight-six, applicant owner, Robin Camacho Group LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three square foot liquor establishment tavern use with three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-six square foot of outdoor seating area, seven-ten and seven-twelve South First Street, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-four, SDR six-seven-eight-eight-eight, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed conversion of a single-family dwelling and a commercial building into a three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-three square foot liquor establishment tavern with a three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-six square foot outdoor seating area, Ward Three. Staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-five, SUP six-seven-eight-nine-seven, applicant Las Vegas Net dot net hotel owner, Semencha Two-Sixty LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one square foot tavern limited establishment use with four-thousand-sixty-three square feet of outdoor seating area at two thou, uh, twenty-six-oh-one Westwood Drive, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-six, SDR six-seven-nine-zero-one, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one square foot expansion and renovation of an existing hotel building, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-seven, SUP six-seven-eight-nine-zero, applicant Wireless Doctor LLC, owner Tenea Village LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed twelve-hundred square foot second-hand dealer use at seven-two-six-zero Westsizer Drive, Suite One-Fifty, Ward Six Ross. Staff recommends approval. Number twenty-eight, SUP six-seven-nine-one-two, applicant Marco Sagrezi, owner Durango Sahara LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a restaurant with a service bar use within an existing two-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven square foot restaurant with eight-hundred square feet of outdoor seating area and a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from an individual care center licensed for more than twelve children where four-hundred feet is required at eighty-six-fifteen West Sahara Avenue, Ward Two Beers. Staff recommends approval. Item number twenty-nine, SUP six-seven-nine-five-one, applicant owner Centennial Property LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto repair garage. Major use, seventy-three-hundred Westsizer Drive, Suite One-Fifty, Ward Six. Staff recommends approval. And that is all of the one motion, one vote, so... No staff report? Would, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward on any of these items. Ma'am, please come forward to the podium. Anyone wanting to be heard, we have three microphones up here, please line up. Can we get your name and address for the record?
Cherry Brown, eleven-sixty-four Hassel Avenue.
Okay, which item do you want to hear, talk about?
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay, number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
I'm just a homeowner. I've been there sixteen years.
Okay, so would you like this item to be pulled, to be heard in a public forum?
I would like to object to it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, you know, pull items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Thank you, and you'll have the opportunity to be heard here in a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Name is Richard Blatman. What other information?
Address?
Uh, well, I'm representing, or...
Your, your address, please.
Nine-fourty McKinley View, Henderson, Nevada.
Thank you. Okay, what, what items would you like to be heard on?
I want clarification on item twenty-nine. Reason being, we are currently a tenant at that address.
Okay.
For a motor repair facility. I guess the contractor and/or whoever is asking for a special use permit, major. I don't know what major for that area would be, and why would we be requesting a major change in the area if they already have ordinances and they didn't put in one, for one before?
Is this clearly that you just want a definition, or you want to speak on this item?
I want to oppose it, if possible, because we are currently...
Okay, then I'm just gonna go ahead and, and pull item number twenty-nine, and we'll open this up for a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Marcus Skidzy, item number twenty-eight. I'm at eighty-six-fifteen West Sahara Avenue. It's a restaurant. We're just looking to go into, what it says on there was the service liquor bar license, and right now it's a beer and wine, but a year ago it was a service liquor, so it's not much of a difference in that neighborhood at all.
Are you opposing this, or?
No, no, I'm, I'm the one that's, I'm the applicant.
Okay, so, um...
Just wanted to...
I would just leave it on the one motion, one vote?
Yep.
And...
There it is.
I appreciate you coming up here. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, come forward. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask Vice Chair Cherry to make a motion.
Through the chair, on items number seven, eight, and nine, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and twenty-one through twenty-eight, I'll make a motion for approval subject to all staff conditions.
Okay, a motion's on the floor. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items seven, eight, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are all final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days. Item nine is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within seven days. I think that's it, the rest of them were pulled. I'm sorry, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, 2017.
Thank you. Moving on to items number, related items, ten through fourteen, I'll go ahead and read these into the record. Item ten, GPA six-seven-eight-nine-eight, applicant Murphy Oil USA, owner LVGA, or LVG Number Five LLC, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from service commercial to mixed use on the south side of Charleston Boulevard, East Jones, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item eleven, SUP six-seven-nine-five-three, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a gaming establishment, general business-related use, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item twelve, SDR six-seven-eight-nine-nine, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed one-thousand-four-hundred square foot general retail store, convenience store with fuel pumps, with a waiver to allow a building to not be oriented to, to the corner and street friendships where such is required, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item number thirteen, VAC six-eight-one-three-one, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a portion of a ten-foot wide public drainage easement, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item number fourteen, TMP six-seven-nine-zero-zero, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision, Ward One, Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, a general retail, convenience store development is appropriate for a corner lot along two major arterials. The site is adequately screened from adjacent multifamily residential development to the east, and screening will be enhanced by proposed landscape buffer along the east property line. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here representing the applicant.
Okay, is that all the comments that you have?
Uh, we agree with staff's recommendation for approval, but obviously this has been pulled off, so I think we need to address, uh...
All right, Commissioner Quinn, before, before you start...
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Quinn.
Uh, thank you, Jen, for, for bringing this to me, and I, and it was a great project, and everything's good. It's just, between now and council, I think there was some discussion about some design upgrades that you were gonna make to the building, and so the councilwoman would like to see them, and therefore I have to send them upstairs because I didn't see them either. So... Yes, I will commit on the record that we will continue working with Councilwoman Tarkanian's office to address the elevations. We will, of course, get those to staff. Uh, any revisions to the elevations to staff before City Council? Right. When this goes on February fifteenth. She's certainly sorry to hold you up, it's just she, she, you know, wants to see... We understand perfectly. No, we're happy to work with her, we understand. Thank you so much. So, shall I just make motions for approval and send them to the...
Please, Commissioner.
I'm sorry for that, Jen. Anyway, it's, uh, number ten, GPA six-seven-eight-nine-eight. My motion is for approval following staff's recommendations.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding SUP six-seven-nine-five-three, my motion is also to follow staff's recommendation this evening for approval.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you. Number twelve, SDR six-seven-eight-nine-nine, my motion is for approval following all of staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you. Number thirteen, the vacation, item six-one-three-one, my motion is to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you. Last but not least, number fourteen, TMP six-seven-nine-zero-zero-two, the follow staff's recommendation for approval as well. Thank you, Jen. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, 2017.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, I have already read these into the record, and I don't think I need to read them into the record again, so I'll just go ahead and ask for a staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed expansion is designed to look like a residence, will provide additional child and educational services for the area, and is a desirable infill project within the West Las Vegas and Las Vegas redevelopment and planning areas. The site contains an existing slab four feet from the west property line where five feet is required, and the variance has been requested to provide relief from this requirement. Staff recommends approval of the variance due to the narrowness of the lot width and the existing location of the previously installed building slab, and is also recommending approval of all other applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant here tonight? Good evening. If we could have your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Leonard Foemar, ninety-four-hundred Grand Gate, Las Vegas, Nevada. This is Pastor William Cherry of Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. Good.
Pastor Cherry from Pleasant Grove Baptist Church.
And your, your address, sir?
Oh, my address is eleven-fourty Payhor Drive.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to comment on, on the applications before us tonight?
Uh, yes, the application, we want to try to put a building up, a structure up that we may have after-school program, tutoring programs, some things for the neighborhood children to come and be a part of. Uh, it's not, would not be having services with a lot of, lot of noise, it's just a place where classes would be held, and hopefully during the summer we can have a feeding program that they can come in, children in the neighborhood, to have breakfast or lunch, or whatever we can get, provide for them in the neighborhood.
Perfect. Does anybody else have anything to add from, from your group?
Same.
Okay, all right, thank you. If I could ask you, I'll step back and sit in those, the front row seat and ask anybody else who would like to come, this is a public hearing, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Cherry Brown, eleven-sixty-four Hassel Avenue. I live right next door to the proposed items. I'm a Habitat for Humanity mother. I built several homes in the neighborhood, up to twenty. We've made it a neighborhood, and in my neighborhood, it's not medium to low-density houses. It's houses. The only thing that are on the blocks are houses, and there's churches. There's a church across the street, which is this gentleman's. There's a church behind me. There's two churches a block down. There's another church at the very end of my block. I don't see them out in the neighborhood cleaning with us, with Habitat for Humanity. I put speed bumps in. I've made this neighborhood in seventeen years, a neighborhood with a lot of people, volunteers. There are enough churches. He's not going to put a classroom, he's going to put basketball courts. In sixteen years that I've been in the home, I'm on seventeen. I have eight windows in my house. I have lost thirty-one. They're three-hundred dollars apiece, all from children in the neighborhood. I had two dogs, both killed, from children in the neighborhood. There's gonna be a building there. They don't live in the neighborhood. It's not attended, just like his other two buildings are not attended during the week. He's not nice to the children in the neighborhood. They're not even allowed to ride their bikes on the church blacktop. There's enough church, do little. The library, On Your Auguste Preparatory School, is four minutes and two seconds from my house. There's a pool. There's a library, which I and my children visit the whole time they were growing up. There's plenty of places for these children to go. They don't go. I am telling you, please, this is my house. I plan on living in this neighborhood for a very long time. I have been through a nightmare. This is going to be next door. If he needs four feet, why can't he have five? If he needs to build the wall higher, fine. If you approve this, fine. Protect me. Because Lawrence Weekly came in and changed my life because of the property next door to me. The kids all play on it. It's just an empty slab now, but there was a building there. The moment it became vacant, it was a crack house. My children lived in my room for three years. I just need peace. It should be a home. That's what it was supposed to be. That's what it should be, is a home. Another home for a family trying to get by in a low-level neighborhood. I'm just asking for peace. If you grant everything, at least protect my home. That my wall between his church and my house is damaged because of kids from his church. He's not there. I even give the gentleman food and diapers and clothing, and he still yells at the kids who are just outside playing because, and do I get to park on my block on Sunday or on Wednesday? No. I can't park in front of my own home. He's got gigantic parking lots. They don't use them. It's too far to walk to the front door. If he's gonna be in the neighborhood, be part of the neighborhood. There's people that are homeless in my neighborhood that I help feed. Does he do it? No. He helps his little group, and they're there two days a week, three days a week. they're there two days a week, three days a week, and then the rest of that property is just me defending my land. I got a stack of police reports this big. It's a home. It's a family neighborhood. Habitat for Humanity, we've built 15 homes in that neighborhood. You guys allowed it. Why do you want to keep building churches that are only open one day a week, Wednesday night for Spanish-speaking people? I don't have a problem with churches. There's nine churches within a stone's throw of my home. Nine. There's five on my block, and that's only three little blocks. How much more do we need? Are they going to help the kids? No. I've been there 16 years. They haven't helped the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and ask applicants to come back up. I'll give you two minutes for rebuttal if you want to have any final comments.
Mr. Chairman, before he does his rebuttal, I notice I'm going to have to abstain on this matter out of an abundance of caution, and I believe I did legal work for one of the applicant's representatives, and so as I state out of abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Flingus, applicant, please go ahead.
Yes, Willie Cherry, senior pastor. Some of the statement was made was very untrue. The children do play on the property in the neighborhood. When I come around, they all speak to me. They all know me. As far as me in the neighborhood, I work with recap, reclaiming every sit-around piece. In the morning, 9 o'clock, I'm in the neighborhood with Metro on the corner of Laurie, and someone got killed. I'll be out there with Metropolitan Police. I'm known in the community. What is being said hurts. I don't know who it was, but it was in her house, staying for months, and they parked on the property. We didn't say nothing to them about it. I mean, I don't mind about her saying that she don't want it, but let's be truthful about it, because what she was saying was not true.
Thank you. Sir, did you...
Yeah, I just wanted to point...
Can we get your name?
I'm sorry, Leonard Folmar. I just wanted to point out that Pastor Cherry is known throughout the community for his work with the police and the neighborhood and the community, working to assure that the community is safe, that we go back to when we had the problems with gangs. He was on scene, on-site, with the police. So, he does considerable work in the community to bring peace to the community. And I wanted to point that out because out of the church, you know, he extends his hand, and the church members do the same.
Thank you very much. I'll now turn this over to the planning commission for discussion. Commissioner Creer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the applicant. Pastor Cherry, do you guys own the land?
Yes, we do.
So, it's your land that the church owns?
Right.
And obviously, I'm very familiar with the property, and I live in five minutes from there, driven by a number of times. And yes, there are a number of churches in that area predating some of our special use permit requirements out of there. I think that since they are there, we have an obligation to ensure that the land does go towards the best use, that we do hold the churches accountable to be upstanding citizens of the community, that you do play your part, which I know you do, and I am familiar with the other churches in that area, and I haven't heard anything to the contrary of them being nothing but supportive of the community. So, considering the fact that you own the land, and considering the fact that I'd like to see something built there besides just a slab that's there, and something nice, something that we all could be proud of in our community, then I'm going to be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Chairman Schlotman. Excuse me. Can we pull up that picture of that lot, please, where the lady's house is next door? Thank you. I see it on my thing. So, we're looking at the... I'm looking at the wall that's right next door to her. Sir, could you... Sir, the applicant, sir, could you come up? Sir, I just want to ask you a couple of questions so we can have a peaceful neighborhood. Would you be willing to raise that wall next door to her that would be equal to the height of the wall that's directly behind her house? It looks like, how many more feet? It looks like, how many more feet is that, Todd?
I think it's a five-foot fence on the back side, and it steps down, so we can bring it all up to that level.
Five feet across?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we can't be talking back and forth. So, my suggestion would be that you raise the wall, maybe put in a little landscaping, some trees along there for a nice buffer for her. She's been there much longer than you. And my other question to you is, with the property across the street, and you're going to be feeding the children here and that kind of stuff in this property?
We'd like to have a summer feeding program that children can come in and have lunch.
It's just none of my business. I was wondering why you didn't do it at the existing building across the street. But I think what I would do, if it's okay with my friend, Commissioner...
Creer.
Creer, is maybe if we could hold it for a month, and you can work with her, and bring the wall up, bring in some landscaping, shake hands, be good neighbors. She's doing wonderful things in our community, and so are you. And the good news is, if we join together, you're doing double wonderful things together. So, my feeling is, even though it's on here tonight to be approved, I'd like to see you come back with some improvements that would satisfy her, and you could be good neighbors together. So, my motion would be to hold it if Commissioner Creer would think that's okay.
I don't know if we need to hold it. I think that we can put some, you know, considerations on it, approve it with some stipulations, that we can come to an agreement tonight so that we can move forward with this project.
We would be willing to work with her, certainly, but... And then we'll, you know, make the wall level all across, raise the wall, and according to what the planning commission directs, put in the appropriate landscape.
Trees, yeah.
We will work with her. That's no problem. If there was a problem, it would never brought to our attention because we try to be good neighbors.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's just my comment, so...
Commissioner Trubridge, and then we'll go to Commissioner Moody.
Applicants, if you would, please. One more question. The neighbor said that there's an existing slab there.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned that it would be an outside play area for the kids. Do you have intention to light the facility?
No basketball courts and stuff like that. I don't know where that come from, but it's... Because basically, what we will have back there, if anything, it might be a tetherball, if anything.
Okay, there'll be no lights is my...
No lights and stuff like that. No loud music.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I have a question for the lady that is protesting this.
Absolutely. And if you wouldn't mind just giving your name again for the record?
Cherry Brown.
Hi, thank you. I know this is real to you. I can hear the emotion in your voice as you're talking to us tonight. What I didn't hear from you, I need you to connect the dots for me as far as making the connection between the things that have gone on at your home, the things that you've experienced over the years, and why this church coming in would exacerbate that problem.
Because that property is unattended, and that's where the kids cross, right there, from the back wall over. They jump that wall.
Well, they do now, but...
They always have. I had to stop it with axle grease and...
Okay, so hang on. You don't believe that with some improvements on the property and the construction?
No, I was all, that sounds great. As long as I've got that buffer, I'm all... You know, but I'm not giving that choice. Yeah, I was so happy to hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Because that buffer will help, because there won't be jumping on my fence.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I do have one question for staff, and that is this idea that I heard about some of the outdoor activities that are planned, including feeding some people. Is that something that would be allowed with this use? Question for staff?
Yes, please.
There are some uses that are ancillary to the church, especially the, as far as childcare and/or teaching, but food banks were, say, like if it's almost like food bank in the sense for homeless and things like that, that's actually something that would not be permitted. So, I would tread lightly on which types of uses.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware that that may be a prohibited use, and you would need permission before you ever carried that out. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you.
If you want to take into any considerations, the repair in the wall or anything, please?
I do. So, just for clarification, it would be the, is it the east wall of the property that we would raise to... Is it the east wall? It's the east wall, correct? And it's the east, would it be actually the east and west wall, or is it just the east wall? Yeah. So, it's the east wall, and...
And Commissioner, just to let you know, that I think staff has something crafted when we get to item number 20 for the SDR, but if you want to make motions on 18 and 19 now?
I was going to ask, and so, right, so the 20 would be the landscaping, but the wall would fall under 18?
Number 20 as well, sir.
Okay, great. So, VAR 67801, I recommend staff's approval.
We have a motion on the floor, subject to all staff's conditions.
That motion carries.
Mr. Chair, through you, agenda item 19, SGP 67800. I recommend staff's approval with all conditions.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Great. And for 20, you want to... Peter?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. A proposed condition for the eastern property line wall would read as follows. The eastern property line wall shall be raised to eight feet. So, that would be, the existing wall would be raised to eight feet versus the construction of a new one, if you desire. And if you want any additional landscaping, I can prepare something for that as well.
I would.
Okay. In light of that, additional landscaping shall be installed along the eastern property line to provide visual screening.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. If we can get the applicant to come forward and just let us know, have you agree to those additional two conditions?
Yes, we agree.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might please, real quick.
Yes.
Mr. Longstein, would that condition provide the flexibility in the event that the foundation of that wall wouldn't support it going to eight feet?
If it could not support it, it would require the removal and replacement of it, so to have an eight-foot wall.
And you're okay with that?
Yes, we agree.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Agenda item 20, SDR 67802. I move to follow staff's recommendations
for approval with all conditions and the new added conditions as well.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 18, 19, and 20 are final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 29, SGP 67951. Applicant owner, Centennial Property LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto repair garage, major use at 7300 West Azur Drive, Suite 150, Ward 6, Ross. Staff recommends approval. Is the applicant here? If we can get your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Daniel Coletti at... I'm forgetting my address. 10 Magic Stone Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Would you like me to explain a little bit?
Yes, please.
You bet. Okay, so this is a 5.3-acre parcel that currently has a...
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
Let me stop you. Let me get the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing to convert an approved auto repair garage minor use to an auto repair garage major use. The site already has the existing auto repair, already has another existing auto repair garage major use on the site. A special use permit is required pursuant to the Town Center Master Plan Development Standards. In addition to things like oil changes, alignments, and tune-ups that are allowed for the auto repair garage minor use, the auto repair garage major use would also allow collision services, painting, and repairs to vehicles in excess of 10,000 pounds gross vehicle weight. Staff is recommending approval as the use is compatible with the surrounding uses and adjacent developments.
Thank you. Applicant?
Okay. I, if there's any questions, I could answer them, but I concur, if there's anything I can answer. This is, just to expand slightly, there's a 40,000 square foot, a major use, building already called Service King, which is, you may have heard of them, their collision repair and whatnot on the site. But this is a separate building, still on the same site, that is roughly 6,000 square feet, divided into two 3,000 square foot tenant uses, of which the one is, a tenant is already in one, and this is simply the last space within this automotive complex that is being completed. And a European auto repair company is the one that is requesting to move into this space, and so I'm here for the applicant. And if there's any things I could answer, I will do so.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Anybody wanting to be heard, please come forward.
Mike Ganson, 1100 South Sixth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. I just have one question. Does the property need an oil-water separator, or since they're increasing the use or the density of that property, will that meet the environmental needs of that facility?
Just to let you know, we are the planning commission, and the building department will make them put in any sand oil separators and anything that is required by the building code. So, they can't get any waivers from this commission on that, and that will be taken up with the building department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Conan Banks. I'm at 7512 Hickory Hills Drive. I oppose this, the other automotive company coming in, because the One Stop is literally the one stop to get all your automotive fixed. With the collisions, Service King is right next door. They're a huge company, big name. Most insurances will send their people to Service King. I've been, I've had my insurance send me there before. So, I don't believe that we need the collision next door in that small building. I don't think they'll do well. And I personally have used One Stop, and so has my family. We go there for our oil changes, and the owner there and the techs, they're real quick to help me out and help everyone out. They offer good prices. They work with you for people with tight budgets, and they give you good advice. Even if you're someone like myself who wants to do something on your own, he'll help you fix it by yourself. He really works for the community. So, I just oppose the...
Do you have any comments on why this is good or bad from a planning perspective and not necessarily based on competition?
I just think that it's not needed because of all the, if you look around, there's more. There's, you know, you've got Tire Shop next door, you've got Service King, you've got his service station, the one... his service station, the One Stop. I don't think it's needed in the community right there.
Okay, well, thank you, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please come forward. And if anyone else wants to speak, please start heading up front. Name and address, please.
Richard Blatman, 940 McKinley, Henderson, Nevada. When Mr. Coletti made his input on the property, he stated that, I assume, that the collision shop was already zoned for a major repair. Am I correct?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. When we took over the, the property under lease, we were under the assumption that we were going in there as built-to-suit, and that building was basically for our use. We were also told that another business called Enterprise was taking the end cap. We also had a first dibs on the next 1,500 square feet. It didn't turn out that way because they leased the building to another automotive repair, because they have bills to pay to the, what do you call it, to the bank. I find that very deceiving. We, in turn, were in business for 26 years, another location on the east side. We moved up to the northwest. I'm retiring, my son took over the business, it's his business. But I don't see or understand why we were told that going in there as automotive, we can do the whole gambit, and now we're being told that they want to go for a special use permit to do more than major in that remaining 2,800 square feet. I don't know how conducive it is. I also heard that it's going in as a Asian-European. Well, if they want to go in specifically as Asian-European, I wouldn't object. But if they're gonna go in as a do-it-all under the guise of Asian-European, and do exactly what I'm doing, and then want to do more than that, you know, the old adage is, if I had multiple businesses of the same type around Las Vegas, and I move in next to you, but yet I don't want you there, I can loan my prices until I force you out, because I'm a single entity. And also, I don't think the area warrants any more repair facilities in that small corridor. I really don't. Across the street from us, you have Discount Tire and all kinds of empty lots. Lee's Liquor has a sign there for the last seven years. The letters are already fading off. The reason they're not going in is they were told, "You can't be within 1,000 feet of a school." Well, why not go for a special use permit? I don't see any school kids on that area. I mean, they keep changing. When rules and regulations and URS have developed for certain areas, I would think that the city of Las Vegas would stand up to that, and go with the businesses or the housing that that area is conducive for. But every time something comes up, they want a special use permit. Let's change this for the benefit of this person. Let's dump this down, this drain, because it's only one person for that area. And if it happens 10,000 times, that's more junk going in the drainage system. Well, let's put in this special use permit, another one, another one, another one, until it's so clustered, how do you back out of it? You can't. You wait 50 years until the, the area is totally demolished, and then you plow it under and rebuild again, and come up with new, new rules and regulations. So, I'm saying, I don't mind it if they want to go in as a specialized Asian-European and stick to it. They violate it, they're out. Just like I'm in there as a general automotive. I can do Ford, Chevy, Dodge, Mercury, anything I want, all right, because I'm generalized. But I was also told that I can do up to engine replacement, transmission replacement, and that kind of thing, which wouldn't put me in a C1 or an H1 category, highway or city, for that zoning. I could be in an H or a city C3, which means I can rebuild transmissions, I can rebuild engines. And in the time that we've been there since May 9th, we have not done those, even though I have an engine sitting on the side of my bay that came out of vehicle that was seized. That vehicle since went to the junkyard. The engine is following. I just need to call somebody to take it out. So, I don't get into engine rebuilding and that kind of thing, the majors. Like I said, I don't mind it as long as they want to go in under their specific and not take over the whole gambit.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the applicant to please come back forward to the podium, and I'll give you two minutes just as rebuttal.
The fact is that we are trying for a special use permit that would, in fact, allow engine replacement, which would be not directly competing with what the current tenant is doing. And so, that's why we're, we're here, trying to get this done. And so, if there are any other questions, I can answer them for you.
Thank you. We'll turn this over to the plan, the commission, and we'll start with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the three gentlemen that have spoken tonight. We've heard of a lot of reasons why this shouldn't go in. What we haven't heard is any substantial land use reasons why this shouldn't go in. And I want to remind the public that that's what this board is here for. The question is, is this compatible? Is it harmonious? And in this situation, the subject property already contains an auto repair garage. We've already approved the use for this property. It makes perfect sense to me to, to bring this in, and I think it's why staff has recommended approval. So, my vote will be to follow staff's recommendation.
If there's no other comments, Chairman Moody, can we have a motion?
Thank you. My motion is to approve Item 29, subject to staff's conditions, if approved.
Thank you, Commissioner. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Item 29 is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's Office within 10 days.
All right, moving on to public hearing items, and before we get into public hearing items, I'm gonna go ahead and pull Item 60 forward, which is Director's Business. And Item Number 60 is abeyance. Discussion for possible action to receive a presentation regarding the development and implementation of non-urban streetscape standards, and provide direction to staff on matters relating thereto.
Mr. Chairman, this item is, was held over from the City Council Planning Commission Joint Workshop back in December. We didn't have time to get to it. We had such a lively discussion on the Urban Form Code, so Mr. Pavelka from Public Works has agreed to come here tonight and give us this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the City of Las Vegas. Good evening, Chair, Mr. Chair and Commission. So, today, yes, I'm gonna talk about non-urban streetscape standards, and currently, we don't have any. So, when an developer comes in and requests waivers in rural areas, they are typically denied because they don't meet standards, and then they go through the hearing process. So, I think this is really good, and so, I'm gonna go over what our standards are, what some of the issues that we have with them, and then also share with you what RTC is doing with Clark County in developing non-urban streetscape standards, and then give you some recommendations, and then ask for your direction. So, in 2011, we adopted the complete streets, and things changed at that point, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about what happened prior to that. Prior to that, there were no standards. It was a case-by-case basis. Generally, 28 to 34 feet of asphalt with roll, curb, and gutter were allowed. Typically, no sidewalks. Pedestrian paths or bike lanes were installed. Street lighting was generally waived. In larger developments, they would put it in at the intersections, and then we would ask for a contribution fee, which would allow the city to put in lights later. And then, we would always ask if a developer waived some of the offsites to go ahead and provide a covenant, which basically said that if the city requested the improvements later, that they were willing to do that through an SID. So then, in 2011, we revised Title 19 of the municipal code and amended to adopt complete streets, which stresses multi-modal transportation, full pavement, bike lanes. It encouraged buses, sidewalks. It had amenity corridors and landscaping, just to encourage other modes of transportation. But the revisions did not include rural standard updates, so we still don't have them. We, in that, we still continue the contribution fee when we waive streetlights, and we also ask for the covenant when we waive those offsites. So, as I mentioned, RTC is working with the county right now to develop rural standards, and they've invited us to a few of their meetings, so I'm gonna share some of the typical sections that they've developed so far. And please understand, they're in the middle of this study. We've been providing them comments as well, so. They've done typical sections for the 60, 80, and 100-foot right-of-way streets that I'll share with you now. So, here's the 100-foot right-of-way section, and in that, it has two lanes each direction instead of three of a typical 100-foot right-of-way. It's got a median, a buffered bike lane, and an amenity zone on each side, but it has a sidewalk on one side. So, we really like that section. We, we've recommended that they reduce the street lanes a little bit to allow sidewalks on both sides. Also, they show an equestrian, equestrian trail. They name it an amenity zone. If they truly want an equestrian trail, we'd prefer it was outside the right-of-way and maintained by the HOA. And again, these don't show roadside ditches. And let me back up. In that study, in low-mobility situations, all their sections show roadside ditches for all their right-of-way widths. I didn't, I didn't put those in there because there'd be so many of them, but this is the ones that we prefer. Here's the 80-foot street section, one lane in each direction with a center two-way left-turn lane, buffered bike lanes and sidewalks on each side. This shows asphalt paths. We would prefer concrete sidewalk because asphalt paths are so hard to maintain ADA requirements and standards. And then here's their 60-foot section. It shows roadside ditches. It's, their sections are generally what they allow right now in their neighborhood preservation areas. 32 feet of pavement with roadside ditches. In this case, they've added a sidewalk and the amenity zone. This is preferably what staff would like to see, and that is full pavement with roll, curb, and gutter, sidewalks in amenity zones on both sides, and street lighting. So, some of the things we'd like you to consider is ADA compliance. Asphalt paths generally don't maintain ADA standards, and, and a lot of that has to do with just keeping the grades. They're so tight, especially at the intersections. Asphalt ramps don't work really well. And then also, just the drainage side of it is another reason that we don't prefer it. Maintenance is another issue. Operations and maintenance prefers not to have gravel, shoulders, and ditches, just because it holds water, it collects trash. It can be erosive, as you've known in prior storms several years ago, and it carries that silt downstream, and a lot of times in front of other people's homes. So, that's another good reason. And then MS4 permit, that's through NDP, and basically that says, "Don't put any silt or pollutants into the Lake Mead watershed." And so, if we do allow roadside ditches, we just need to make sure that we may regulate the velocities of the flows. Street lighting, most people in the, in the northwest don't like street lighting, so that's a consideration. And SID cost, when we do a covenant to say that the SID is put in later, generally, we can only charge the homeowner the benefit that, that we, that they get when we put these improvements in, and that generally doesn't make up the entire cost. So, we have to get other funding, and usually RTC has provided that. In other cases, it has to come through other funds, so that's a consideration. And then neighborhood preference. Most residents that live in that area do not want curb-gutter sidewalk. They like it the way it is, so it's something to consider. So, some of the recommendations that we'd like to present to you and then take your direction, get your comments and take your direction are, we'd suggest no rural improvements allowed for commercial or multifamily projects. We'd suggest that larger developments need to construct all their offsites, because if we add them later, SIDs generally don't cover all those costs. And then, for developments that completely span a section between two public streets, that we'd also recommend that the improvements were all constructed. And that's because at the intersections, like I had mentioned, the ADA and the drainage are such big concerns, it'd be good to get all that in. But for short sections, for like a single-family home, we'd recommend that, that you wouldn't have to go back to the hearing process, but administratively, we could look at it, and if, if they could match the improvements that are on each side of them, you know, we would like that we could administratively approve that. For instance, if, if they're building a home and there's no curb, gutter, and sidewalk on either side, could we administratively just approve that, instead of having to go through this hearing process, which generally, it gets approved. But we're trying to find ways to reduce your workload, I guess. And then, as I mentioned, curb and gutter, if we, if we do use roadside ditches, that we do look at areas that have high velocities, maybe we require curb and gutter in those kind of situations. Require an improvement fee on items being deferred, but not just for street lighting, but for everything, is what we recommend. And that's because, like I had mentioned, the SIDs don't generally cover everything, and we thought maybe we could help develop a process or a system that we could charge for some of the other things. And maybe it's off the bond form, that we use those costs. We'd look at revising the code, you know, based on comments tonight or the direction you want us to receive. We'd look at some of these things and what it would take to revise city code, and then come back with you and present. But another thing is, is that we would still think that if we don't follow the revised code, you should still come here and go through the waiver and the hearing process. But maybe we were hoping that we could combine the city code so that it's only, it's only one application instead of several that we currently have to do now, so.
With that, any questions? Any direction for me? If this is a public hearing, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close. Oh, we have someone, please come forward.
Good evening, and congratulations, Jerome Saltman.
Thank you.
I am Bridgette Solvey of 7030 North Conquistor. This is of interest to me because I live in a rural area of Clark County that has city, that has encroached around it because of changes in annexation. I would petition or propose that a well-designed curb that is not paved can, can benefit the fact that it will slow water. Put in a riprap-style gutter, not necessarily a V ditch, or just a, a box ditch, like I was required to do when we developed our home. We put a V on one side and a box on the other side because of the water flow. But riprap slows velocity, slows silt, works really well. Separating horses from the street is excellent. I like some of the drawings. I would like to be part of this, if I could get on the email loop to be part of this discussion, if at any point there's, that option is left. Beyond that, I like the ideas that he presented. I like the input that was reflected in his drawings. I disagree that asphalt is better or is less better than concrete. Concrete is brutal to a runner. If anyone here runs or jogs, asphalt is better. Blacktop is better on the body than concrete, so I just toss that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn this over to the planning commission. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Ward 6, we have a lot of situations where the application comes in, they have a neighborhood meeting, and because of a rural neighborhood, the neighbors don't want street lighting. So, during your comments, you said, "Street lighting is a consideration." And my question through the chair is, what exactly does, does that mean, that it's a consideration, and how would that impact a future application where the rural neighbors were opposed to street lighting?
Yeah, and the reason I say it is because most people in, in the rural areas don't like streetlights, and I don't disagree with that. So, it's, it's really, how do we want it? So it's really, how do we want to change the code to allow for it? Do we want to just say it's in there and then continue these waivers, or do you allow us to waive it administratively, just through the code by us, you know, getting parameters from you guys? Currently, they're generally waived, is my understanding, except at intersections, and that's usually just the bigger developments, and I don't think staff personally has a problem with that. So I guess I would say that we would probably follow pretty much the same format on lighting, unless we heard otherwise from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trebridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, or one comment and one question. The comment is, I really like the idea of administrative approval of developments that are consistent with the neighboring properties. That's one. The second is the timing for the approval. We've had some real issues that come forward, because the city does it one way, and it was annexed, conflicting codes. So I would suggest that we time the presentation of this, so that what comes forward is what is, has been approved by the county or is going to be approved at the next meeting. Someone's got to go first, I realize, but I do not want to wind up with, one side of the street does it one way, and the other side of the street does it another, and depending upon whether you like it or not, which side of the street you want, you come and complain to the planning commission because we're being inconsistent for their lifestyles. So that's my point. Let's get them all approved at the same time and let them be consistent.
Commissioner, that was one of the comments I got when I presented at the council last week. They've asked me to really work with RTC and the county project that they're doing, and hopefully we can come to an equal agreement so that we're all consistent, as you said. And that's our intentions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kerr.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I have a question about, on the slide about rural improvement considerations by ADA compliance. How do you create ADA on streets that are rocky and dirt? The consideration that you talked about, how would you do that?
Yeah, and that's-
Without sidewalks and without, and you even said sidewalks are even more cumbersome.
We, and that's why I showed you the section on the 60-foot right-of-way where we just built it out, which honestly, isn't a rural standard anymore, and it's because of the issue that we have with ADA. And I've noticed, in talking to our maintenance department, there are more and more people wanting, as we, as the age bracket ages and we need more assistance, there's a lot of neighborhoods that were, the sidewalk was waived, and now they're wanting it in, and we have design projects right now just going back in and adding sidewalks in. So in these rural areas, I think it is an issue, and I do understand why they don't want sidewalks, I do. I get it, but I feel like we almost need to have them now that we're becoming a more urban environment, and the needs of our people require it. So to me, it is a big consideration, and it's something to consider.
Thank you. Mr., or Commissioner Cherry?
Through the chair. Question on the proposal for an improvement fee or a bond for deferred items. Can you give just a quick example of how that would play out?
Well, when you do a bond form, it's got all the bid items or line items. I was thinking that would be a start for that. We'd take a look at that and say, "Does this make sense?" Because questions I've had in the past is, "What do you do with escalation and that?" Well, in a bond form, you wouldn't unless you changed the bond form, which generally, over years, you'll eventually update those costs too. So some people have made the comment to me that that's just too much, you know? But we would have staff, we would have to look at that and say, "What's fair?"
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment you on even bringing the ADA out into the urban areas. People know here that I have a son in a wheelchair, and I always say, "If he can't go there, don't build it," so that's my motto. But the other thing I want to say is, we have to remember that ADA just is not a wheelchair or a walker. It's somebody walking their three children down with a stroller, and if they're out in the street, they're going to get ran over. So it's not just about a disabled person, as much as encompassing young families, elderly people, and people that were born less fortunate. So this is really nice and exciting, and I appreciate the time you put into the ADA section of this.
Actually, I want to say thank you for bringing that up, because another complaint I was receiving is, is that without, with just gravel shoulders, a lot of people, they have to walk on the paved roads, which is very dangerous, and that's the only option they have, because they can't walk in the gravel. So it forces them to go out onto the roadways, which isn't safe either.
And I have one last question, and it was on one of your slides that says, "Requiring improvement fee for items being deferred." And can you comment on that just a little bit further, or is that going, being charged to the developer?
Yeah, so currently, right now, when a developer waives some of these offsite improvements, we just require the covenant that says, except for street lighting, we do get a fee for street lighting, but all the rest of a curb-gutter sidewalk, we just ask for a covenant that basically states, if the city decides to build out the rest of those improvements later, they're willing to cooperate through an SID. What we'd like to propose is, is that instead of doing the SID, the covenant with the SID, that we just get improvement fees for everything that's waived. And we thought that way, we got the money in the coffers, and that way, it can be used by the city in chunks, you know, to make improvements throughout the area, if requested.
And I just wanted to say, I am a developer, and I do put in the improvements and, you know, the $10,000 centennial streetlights, and a more urban versus the non-urban improvements that we're looking at, and, you know, I think the thing that bothers me most about a lot of these applications that come before us is, the people are asking for waivers, and developers are running on the backs of all the neighbors in these rural areas, and saying, "Oh, well, the neighbors don't want this, so we're not going to put in the streetlights, we're not going to put in the sidewalks, we're not going to do any of this." So what's going to happen? Then I got to ask Lucian Bart Anderson about, "Well, who's going to bear the cost of this?" Well, the homeowners do, not the developer. The developer is the one who's making all the money, and should be putting up the money to put in the improvements in the future. And that's my biggest issue with waiving street scape, and, you know, the, okay, yes, we'll give you the streetlights, and you can put them in the future, and we'll put in the conduit, but what about the labor to install those streetlights? So really, I want to look at, if you can look at figuring out what the cost of the improvements would be, and add, you know, add a fee to it for inflation of what it's going to cost in 10 years. And if the developer wants to pay for that, and put that money up into some fund at the city, that way, the improvements can be put in, and then there's not SID, where a lot of these homeowners come in, then have to come out of pocket 100 bucks or 300 bucks a month, whatever that cost is. So that's one thing that I'd really like for you to look into. I want to put in the streetlights and sidewalks, and do my job as a good developer in this town, and I don't think these other people should be coming in and just stating that, "Hey, we're not going to do this because the neighborhood doesn't want it." Well, then pay for it.
We'll take that direction.
Thank you. And public comment was closed, but I'll give you 20 seconds.
I'll give you real quick. It doesn't make sense to address ADA issues without having the lighting, without having the infrastructure put in, and it's you, as the people's representatives, the stewards of public property, that property belongs to the public, and you are to do what's best for the public, is what we're asking, and that is lighting, so that you can ride your bike at night or safely walk out of the street at night. And it's up for you to maintain that, for everyone, for development.
And thank you, sir.
Whether it be on-demand lighting or continuous, that, you know, be up to the developer. But, you know, I think that we should-
Thank you.
-make ADA and safety first.
And can I get your name and address?
Oh, excuse me, yeah, Mike Ganson, 1100 South 6th Street, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion on this, and so I appreciate your time tonight and taking all of our direction, and look forward to hearing from you very soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Moving back to the public hearing items, and we'll hear related items 30 and 31. Starting with item 30, Avance GPA 66464 applicant owner Alexandra and Esther White, live and trust for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from medium-low-density residential to service commercial at the northeast corner of Galvin Road and Durango Drive. Ward 4 Anthony, staff recommends approval. Item number 31, Avance ZON 66465 for possible action on request for rezoning from undeveloped zone to medium-low-density residential, general plan destination to C1 limited commercial, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the other two are very similar. I don't know if you want to open those as well at the same time.
Thank you. Items 32 and 33. So items 32, Avance GPA 66474 applicant owner Alexandra and Esther White, live and trust for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from medium-low-density residential to service commercial at the southeast corner of Galvin Road and Durango Drive, Ward 4 Anthony. Staff recommends approval. Item 33, Avance ZON 66475 for the possible action on a request for rezoning from undeveloped medium-low-density residential, general plan destination to C1 limited commercial, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has amended the general plan amendment request from service commercial to O office. With the subject site being located in a corner fronted by a major collector in Galvin Road and a primary arterial, Durango Drive, staff finds the proposed O office general plan designation to be appropriate, as the office category provides for small lot offices. Staff is recommending approval of those requests. The applicant has also amended the original rezoning application request from C1 limited commercial to O office. While the O office zoning district does not permit intense uses like the previously proposed C1 limited commercial zoning district did, O office still permits land uses that are too intense adjacent to existing residential uses. Staff finds the allowable uses to be incompatible with the residential adjacency and is recommending denial of the rezoning request. A more appropriate zoning district for the subject site would be PO, professional office, which is intended to allow for office uses in an area which is predominantly residential, but because of traffic and other factors, is no longer suitable for the continuation of low-density residential uses. Professional office zoning district is designed to be a transitional zone to allow low-intensity administrative and professional offices that typically have a low volume of direct daily client and/or customer contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Linda Pearson, reside at 6540 East Redmont Drive, Mesa, Arizona, and I'm here as the applicant on these four items. I just want you to know, I worked really hard on this speech, and staff just let me throw that right out the window, so I'm not going to go to that. We appreciate the hard work that the staff has done with us trying to do something with this piece of property. I'm pretty sure that we talked about this last time I was here. We, the owners of this property are in their 80s, they've owned the property for about 30-plus years. They are just trying to do something with this vacant property. It's, it was shocking when we went to the neighborhood meeting, truthfully, that the people didn't want us to do anything. They just were either happy with it being left as vacant lots, or they just strictly wanted it to be residential. But I think staff, and I hope that you guys concur, that the best use of that is not residential. When they purchased the property, actually, it was a wedding gift, they got five acres, and there was no way even really to drive out there back 30-plus years ago. They didn't even, I don't even know if they ever got to see the property for quite a while. But of course, when the expansion of Galvin came in, they took the five acres, divided it in half, so now they had two and a half acres, and made two corners out of it. Then, again, more development comes along, and recently, as I think the last year and a half or two years, there was an assessment for sidewalk, street lights, curb, and gutter, and they assessed the property owner approximately $175,000 to put those in to enhance the area. That being said, the owner is just trying to find some way to make this a marketable, developable piece of property. They've owned for 30 years, they've tried to sell off and on several times. For residential, there's just no market there. So that's why we originally, even though we all agreed that anything better than C1 was too intense for those corners, because now, instead of, you know, five acres, two and a half acres, each of those corners is an acre, I think it's 1.83 acres. So if they're not large pieces of property where we're going to have big developments, they're just by nature, they're cut down to fairly small pieces, which I think fits good with a neighborhood. And that's why I think we agreed to go to the O zoning designation, because we felt like that would give an opportunity for, one, to be marketable, but two, to be a benefit to the neighborhood. Have some kind of maybe a medical or dental office, maybe a small shopping plaza, you know, that had maybe, you know, a title company or an insurance company or something that people could actually, you know, really use. So I was a little bit taken back by the fact that last Thursday, we got a denial from the staff on office, and I would probably agree with them if we had the whole five acres, that maybe then office would be too intense, because there could be a development so sizable that it would be, you know, an impact. But we have two little pieces that are only an acre and 0.83. Then by the time you put your setbacks, your landscaping, your screenwell restrictions, all the things that a developer has to take into consideration, there's no way that that could be an intense use. So I guess I disagree with staff about the O designation. I appreciate the general plan being amended, that recommendation, and I would ask that you reconsider the O, but obviously, PO would be better than the vacant lot, and I don't understand why the residents, if they don't get something, it's just going to sit there, and honestly, it's a haven for the illegal dumpers that don't want to pay landfill fees. It's, we're over there, in fact, I've got a crew going tomorrow again to clean up some more, and it's, really, it's a fairly ongoing problem, which I know can't be an enhancement for the neighbors. They can't like going by an unauthorized dump, and, but we can't put security guards out there. I guess the other thing would be that we'd have to put a fence around it. First of all, we did berm it about two years ago, but illegal dumpers, they don't really understand what berms, they mean stay out, but they don't really understand that. So they've come in and found their little pathway in, and they're still dumping, so I guess the next thing would be a fence around the properties, which I don't think that'd be a very nice enhancement to the city or to that neighborhood. So that's what we're here today, is to just try to find some good marketable use of that property.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public discussion. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward and show hands, can I see how many people are here to speak on this item today? Okay, we're going to go ahead and limit it to two minutes per person. Everybody, if you can come line up next to the podium, we have three microphones, please line up at each microphone, so we can go through this as quickly as possible. Who would like to start?
Well, I'll-
Name and address for the record, and please get in front of one of the microphones.
Suzanne Dubois.
Thank you.
8468 Bass Tauris and Avenue, Las Vegas.
Thank you.
And I have a petition to submit. It's signed by 102 adult homeowners in the Mira Vista Development. That's a very small development that is next to this vacant lot. However, the petition was signed in opposition to the rezoning from residential to commercial, but I was at that neighborhood meeting that the previous speaker was mentioning, and the homeowners don't want vacant lots there. We want more residential. And so I would like to submit this, if I may-
Please do.
...and I have copies for the commissioners.
Thank you, and you have about one minute. You have about one minute left.
Okay. And that's all I have to say, is that we remain in opposition to any development besides residential.
Thank you so much. Sir?
Hi, my name is Frank Taman. My address is eight-four-six-eight Vast Horizon.
All right.
At the last meeting, there was an abance, and either it was Commissioner Moody, or it could have been Vice Chair Cherry, said, "What have you done to the applicant with regards to due diligence?" And I'm going to here to tell you that it was nothing more than checking off a box. There was a crowded meeting room where essentially the applicant said it'll be for limited use, commercial. And you guys look it up. And we look it up, there's like a hundred and sixty uses. I mean, it's like anything but the nuclear waste plant at Battle Mountain is good. Now it's changed. These people are from Arizona. They are professionals. They have owned this place for five decades. The seventies, eighties, nineties, millennium, millennium plus ten, plus six, did nothing, did zero. They could have sold it at any time, and they can't come crying in the poor mouth now when they had forty years to sell it. Four, zero. They knew it. Across the street, directly across the street, from that facility, from that lot, is a jungle gym. There is a YMCA day camp. There are kids from two-years-old to seven. There are balls being kicked around there. I don't care if there's a title company or a hamburger joint, there's already been two huge accidents at that corner. And the next thing that's going to happen is a ball's going to come right down that ramp, a six-year-old kid's going to be chasing it, and their face is going to be turned into goo. There are plenty of residences being built, so they just can't say, "We can never market it," because they can't. They're just simply looking for top dollar. This is, it's incumbent upon you to keep this area residential, because there are plenty of residential places going up, up and down that street. Okay? So that's where we're at. The homeowners have said, "We don't want an office building there." A hundred people signed.
Sir, I'll give you about ten more seconds, but you're already thirty seconds over.
I'm sorry. It's a hundred and four to zip. One oh four to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come forward. Oh, no, yes. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Christine Stanish. My husband and I own a property in Miravista. We bought it about a year ago, and it's lovely. It's quiet, it's safe. We don't have a lot of loitering, we don't have any of that. And I am against having any businesses next door. Dumpsters, it won't be quiet anymore. I bought a property that was in a residential area one year ago. It was medium-low-density residential. They want to change it to either service commercial, limited commercial, you know, what happens to my rights? I don't want that. And just because somebody has a property there and they want to sell that, yes, they should be able to sell it, but they shouldn't be able to change the zone where I live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello.
Good evening.
If you'd just press that button at the bottom, there you go.
I'm going to go to the hot one.
All right, great.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Marshall. I reside at eighty-four-twenty-one Cavarichi Avenue here in Las Vegas. I'm an owner of that property. I'm not sure where to begin, and I'm nervous about my two minutes, gentlemen and lady, I feel like there's been a little bit of a switch-up at the previous meeting in October that many, many of my neighbors attended. It was decided that there would be, that this would be postponed, this discussion would be postponed until now, and there would be an attempt by the applicants to find a new, perhaps lower-impact zoning classification, for lack of a better word, I'm not sure. But we were informed very specifically that we would be notified if that happened. We were informed that there would be a neighborhood meeting to have a discussion if there was any change. Your own paperwork and your agenda reflect nothing about the new professional office. So nobody's had a chance to consider this. None of us residents. We've been watching for any kind of notification, watching very carefully. We haven't received any. So I'm, I guess I'm asking for a clarification. Again, your own paperwork, the staff recommendations differ from the staff recommendations that we just heard. Again, I understand something different has been proposed, but I don't understand when that happened, and so I'm not prepared to respond to it, and I don't think any of my neighbors who didn't come here were aware of this change. So kind of in limbo right now. Can you guys help me out?
Director, would you like to comment on that?
Certainly, but I'll have to ask Mr. Lowenstein on when the request came in from service commercial to office. But whenever a applicant requests something that's less intense than what was publicly noticed, that item can move forward under the notification for that more intense use, and planning commission can consider that. They can always consider something less intense than what was noticed. But Mr. Lowenstein can fill us in on the, when that request came in. I believe, maybe I'm putting him on the spot.
That's quite all right. Mr. Chairman, the letter in the backup is dated, when we received it was December fifth, two thousand and sixteen, is the letter from Ms. Pearson. After much deliberation, we would like to change our application from C-one to O office, and then it continues on.
And since this was an abance item, the header stays the same, so the public notification of the service commercial and the C-one, that stays the same. But again, you can always go to a less intense under the notification.
Okay, understood, but I think that, I think that many, many of the residents who will be directly affected by this weren't able to really, you know, didn't really have an opportunity to understand that. So I'm just putting that out there, gentlemen. I will say that, and that includes myself. And again, in your own paperwork prepared for this evening, it doesn't seem to be up-to-date either, nor was it on the published-
And it will not be, but-
Agenda. I understand your explanation-
It's a less intense use.
I'm not trying to be argument, I'm just saying that perhaps that's why more people are not here, because, you know, it was kind of left in a certain place three months ago, and now we find ourselves in a bit of a different place. So just putting that on the table.
And just to let you know, we've gone over about two minutes and thirty seconds-
I understand.
And I know some of this was due to your questions to the director and the planning manager, but I'm going to have to go ahead and, go ahead and stop this and move on to the next speaker.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Charles McCauley, eighty-four-twenty-one Cavarichi Avenue.
Good evening.
Thank you. I would request of the council to deny the applicant's proposal for the reasons that have been mentioned earlier months ago and also tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close this hearing and turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Flingis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our job up here is to balance what's good planning with some of the wishes of the neighbors. And in this case, what we have here now is a piece of property, and all candor is never going to go residential. It just isn't going to. And you've got a primary arterial being Durango, and you've also got a major feeder being Galwin, nobody is going to build houses on that corner. And so we're kind of have to do something with this property, and I think what's being asked is probably one of the best buffers you can ask, you know, for. They were originally asking for C-one, which is way too intense for that corner. Under C-one, they could have put a McDonald's, they could have done a lot of gas stations and the like there. So with the office, I do agree with staff that the general plan amendment to down to office is an appropriate use. What I also going to do is when I make my motion a little while as to the zoning, I'm not going to go office on the zoning, I'm going to go professional office on the zoning, because I don't think you need a bank on that corner. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation in that regard. I don't think you need a school or anything like that. I think just strict professional office space is a good use for that corner.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, can we get a motion? Commissioner Flingis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting with item number thirty, which is GPA six-six-four-six-four, move to approve.
Subject to status conditions?
I don't believe there's any conditions on there.
Oh, okay.
And that would be office?
That's correct on the GPA.
Office or professional office?
No, just office on the GPA.
That motion carries.
Now going to item thirty-one, which is ZON six-six-four-six-five, I'm going to move to approve it as professional office.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Item number thirty-two, which is GPA six-six-four-seven-four, move to approve. Yeah, this one's office, because it's just, it's listed as office, so, oh, excuse me, as office, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Then item number thirty-three, which is ZON six-six-four-seven-five, move to approve as professional office.
Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. Moving on to related items thirty-four through forty-one. Item number thirty-four, ZON six-seven-nine-three-eight, applicant owner Deer Springs Village, LLC, for possible action on a request for rezoning from residential estates to C-one limited commercial on the north side of Clark County, two fifteen east of Wallop Highway, Ward six, Ross. Staff recommends approval. Item thirty-five, abance, re-notification VAR six-six-four-four-three, for possible action on a request for variance to allow fifteen-foot rear yard setback where twenty feet is required at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and Wallop Highway, Ward six, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Item number thirty-six, abance, re-notification SUP six-six-four-four-four, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a car wash, full service, Ward six. Staff recommends denial. Item thirty-seven, abance, re-notification SUP six-six-four-four-five, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a four-thousand-square-foot liquor establishment tavern with a waiver to allow a three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-foot distance separation from a school where fifteen hundred feet is required. Ward six, staff recommends denial. Item thirty-eight, abance, re-notification SUP six-six-four-four-six, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for beer-wine-cooler-off sale establishment use with a waiver to allow a three-hundred-and-thirty-nine-foot distance separation from a school where four-hundred feet is required. Ward six, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Item thirty-nine, abance, re-notification SDR six-six-four-four-seven, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed ninety-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine-square-foot shopping center with waivers to allow buildings to not be oriented to the corner and street frontage where such is required. To allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the south property line where fifteen feet is required. To allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east property line where eight feet is required. And to allow a car wash bay to face public right-of-way where such is not allowed. Ward six. Staff recommends denial. Item number forty is VAC six-seven-nine-three-nine, vacation relating to ZON six-seven-nine-three-eight, VAR six-six-four-four-three, SUP six-six-four-four-four, SUP six-six-four-four-five, SUP six-six-four-four-six, and SDR six-six-four-four-seven. Public hearing, owner, applicant, Deer Springs Village and others, for action on a request for petition and vacate a portion of NEO Avenue, generally located south of Deer Springs Way, east of Wallop Highway, Ward six, Ross. Staff recommends approval. And finally, item number forty-one, TMP six-seven-nine-four-zero, for possible action on a request for tentative map for a two-lot commercial subdivision, Ward six, Ross. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to develop a shopping center that would be anchored by a grocery store and have three inline multi-tenant buildings. A corner convenience store with fuel pumps and additional pad set are also proposed. The applications were held in abance at the request of the applicant in order to revise the site plan and landscape plan, and then an additional parcel that was recently annexed into the city was added to the project during this time by requiring a rezoning vacation and a tentative map, and thereby requiring re-notification of all applications for this public hearing. Staff supports the rezoning vacation and tentative map applications, but is recommending denial of the related variance, special use permits, and site review as not being compatible with the surrounding adjacent development due to the various waivers and the exceptions associated with the requests. If approved, condition of approval number five for SDR six-six-four-four-seven should be revised to read. Waiver of Title nineteen point zero-eight point zero-seven-zero is hereby approved to allow a five-foot perimeter landscape buffer along a portion of the south property line where fifteen feet is required. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Bob Gronhour, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here tonight representing Lorich Properties. With me is Mr. Hank Gordon, is in the audience here tonight if you have any questions, and I also do have a representative from Albertson's, in case if you have any questions for Albertson's. The first thing that I'd like to do as I get into the presentation is get your attention to the overhead, please. And I think it's important, as I'm showing you on the aerial here, is the location of the property itself before we get into the application. As I can, as I'm showing you on the overhead here, this is the two-fifteen Beltway located just south of our property. We have Wallop High, which runs north and south. You have Deer Springs here, which runs east and west. Tonight, we are proposing for an Albertson Shopping Center, which is on approximately ten acres of property, as you can see, highlighted here in yellow. But before we actually get into the property itself and talking about the ten acres, I think it's important for everybody here and some people in the audience to understand what has happened pre-recession, what happened during the recession, and why we're here today. What I'm showing you on the overhead here is a zoning map. It's actually not, actually updated to today's current zoning on the property here for C-one zoning. But the reason why I'm showing you the zoning map here is, is I'm showing you the areas here along with this residential piece of property. Before the recession, this property here was approved for a commercial shopping center on approximately twenty-two-and-a-half acres of property. This, about ten years ago, was designed to be a very intense commercial shopping center here to address the issues with the construction of the Providence Master Plan community and along with the future growth up here in the northwest area. Since then, obviously, through the recession, just like any other project, or many projects that came before you over the last couple of years, this property here broke up with different ownership. It was fractured. You could come in, and now what you have today is, within the last few years, this piece of property came in on seven-and-a-half acres approximately for a small lot development. That's why you see RCL. One of the understandings at that point in time was, back about ten years ago, it was decided that it was going to be a larger commercial component, but once, because of the recession and the way things are being developed today, what you have is, it was going- developed today, what you have is it was going to be more of a reduced shopping center anywhere up to about 15 acres located on the property here. So the council and you approved the residential development that was here, which is a smaller lot development, understanding that this development would act to the buffer with the Las Vegas Valley Water District property, which is to the east, along with the future commercial development that's going to be going out on Deer Springs and Huallapi. So now I want to take you to where we are today, which is the site plan itself on the overhead. And where we are today, as I already mentioned, is we have 10 acres of property. Albertson's is looking to come in here to be the main anchor. As a matter of fact, speaking with Mr. Gordon earlier tonight here, sitting here, he mentioned to me that this would be the first traditional standalone grocery shopping center to be built in the limits of the city of Las Vegas in the last 10 years, when you look at the traditional Albertson's, the Smiths, et cetera. So that goes to show you through the pre-recession, recession of where we are today with respect to a traditional grocery store that you see that's being proposed here tonight. And if you're familiar with Lorich Properties, it's just about on every corner throughout the city and throughout the county that you see quality commercial developments. That's why Mr. Gordon's here tonight and making sure to ensure, as we're here tonight, that this is another quality development that's going to be located here in the northwest. The property itself, as I'm showing you here, the Albertson's would be facing out on towards Huallapi itself. We have numerous of other shops that are going to be within the shopping center itself. We have a convenience store with a car wash. The property is scheduled to be developed and open sometime first quarter of 2017. The shopping center is currently approximately, just about leased up, with the exception of some of the suites that are located here. With respect to the applications that are before you, we do have a zone change, and that's one of the reasons why we held the matter a couple of times. This piece of property here, this is a triangular piece of property, was annexed in from Clark County into the city of Las Vegas, and tonight we're asking to change the zoning here for commercial development, which is C1, which would be compatible with an existing C1 uses or C1 zoning that's approved in the area. Staff is recommending approval. We do have some patent easements that we're asking for vacation along with this parcel here. Staff is also recommending approval. With respect to the site plan itself, I could explain to you some of the site plan provisions that we're proposing here, which is no different than, that's been approved for similar grocery stores, such as what we're proposing here for a shopping center. Number one, we do have a variance with the setback here where shops are located up adjacent to the Beltway. You are required to have 20 feet from the property line. We're asking for 15 feet. To be quite honest, any other space between our property, the building here and the property line itself, is just excessive wasted space. We get more public safety issues back here, especially when you're backing up to the Beltway, and the Beltway is more elevated than the property itself. So this is just a hidden area here. Although we are providing 10 feet of landscaping back in this area, it is essentially more or less dead area here. We feel that the variance to reduce the separation from 20 feet to 15 is appropriate in this area. It does not have any negative impacts. As a matter of fact, if you take a look at the property itself, we do meet the legal hardship where we do have unique circumstances with unusually shaped piece of property. And with that being said, along this line here, we do have a waiver to reduce some of the landscaping. The landscaping requirements would be about six feet of landscaping, which is located along this area here, as I'm showing you, so you can see where it's pinched. In this area, we do have, we're backing up adjacent to the drainage channel along with the 215, as I mentioned to you. So we feel that it's sufficient to have some reduction in some landscaping in that area. In our initial site plan, we had some reductions along Huallapi and Deer Springs. Today, as I'm standing before you, we have complied to those requirements for landscaping requirements, and actually in some instances, as you'll see throughout the site plan itself, like in this area, we have 41 feet of landscaping, excuse me, almost approximately 35 feet of landscaping in this area. So we do have some nice lush landscape areas on the perimeter of the site itself. As staff has mentioned, some of the changes that we made to the site plan, initially we were not meeting the tree requirements with respect to the landscaping itself as required by code. We've worked with staff. There is a condition in there. We're meeting all the tree requirements is my understanding of what we need to do here. With respect to landscaping, the waiver that we're asking along the east side of our property line, the reason why it comes out to be zero, as you can see in these areas here and the area here, we're having it for access to the additional five-acre piece of property to the east of us, adjacent to us. With that, we are actually providing 10 feet of landscaping in this area, and the only areas where we weren't providing landscaping along, as I mentioned, is where we would have some kind of cross-access easement, hopefully with the adjacent property owner. With respect to the convenience store and the car wash, it's located here, first of all, we're asking for a waiver not to have the car wash up on top of the corner itself. This board and city council have been consistent in the last several years with respect to the placement of these buildings, and typically the placement of these buildings have been moved off the streets in that way. One of the issues when you're dealing with commercial shopping centers of this size, you deal with public safety issues, it's easier to have eyes on into the center instead of having a complete block wall walling off the center itself. The car wash that we're proposing that's located here, we're asking for a waiver, it faces out on the Deer Springs. However, one thing I want to point out, the city council, the city has already approved commercial development across the street from us. The bay that's going to be facing out on Deer Springs does not have any negative impact for residential type of development. As a matter of fact, the landscaping in here, these are the type of trees that we have proposed in our landscape plan. One of the things that we're willing to do is to add additional trees, such as a tree that you see here, or some other trees that is already in our landscape plan itself, to add additional trees in this area to provide a nice screening buffer in this area if you do have some concern. So we're in agreeable and amenable to that. I just wanted to show you some of the landscaping that's on the trees that would be on the perimeter of the site itself. With that, the other two things that I do want to mention is with respect to the convenience store, and we have a Winchell's Restaurant Tavern, which is going to be located at the west cap of our shops, eh. When you do the waiver distance separations between protected uses, if you're familiar with this area, just across the Beltway itself, and I'll show you on an overhead here, is what you have is you have Centennial High School. The code requires you to measure from the closest property line to property line. That's why in the waiver provision of what we're asking for, it comes out to be 339 feet from the separation between a school and the tavern and the convenience store itself, since it's selling beer and wine. When you really take a look at it, if you're familiar with this area, this area here, the Beltway itself is humongous. It's a huge barrier. As a matter of fact, in taking a picture out there even earlier today, you could see, this is looking from the Clark County School District property, just right at the edge, looking this way where our property would be located well on the other side of the freeway itself. The purpose for this illustration here is to show you that the waiver is most appropriate here to be approved for the uses that we're asking for, for the restaurant tavern and for the beer and wine. Just rough estimates, if you went from building to building from the convenience store itself, although I know the code doesn't measure from building to building, but typically when we've done these in the past, we look at the building to building itself. That's in excess of 2,000 feet, and if it was from the restaurant tavern itself, from building to building, it's in excess of 1,500 feet. It's close to actually 1,600 feet. So overall, as I mentioned here, this has been a long journey coming through here to provide a quality commercial shopping center here in the northwest. As I said, this started many years ago, probably approximately 10-plus years of assembling 20-plus acres of property for commercial. And as it turned out with the way we do things nowadays with development, things aren't as big as a 20-acre commercial shopping center. We do have end-users, we do have tenants, we do have a commercial developer who does an outstanding job here in the valley with his commercial development. So with that being said, we'd ask you to approve the zoning, the vacation, the use permits, the tentative map, and the waivers that we are requesting for. So with that being said, I could answer any other questions that you might have.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Can I get a show of hands? How many more people are in the audience that are going to want to be heard? All right, we'll go ahead and give everybody two minutes. Can we get your name and address for the record?
Hi, sure. Liz Sirokak, 8965 Southeastern Avenue, Suite 32, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89123. I'm here this evening on behalf of Mosaic Land 1 LLC, and if I can direct your attention to the overhead, please. So the 10 acres that Mr. Gronhour was just speaking about are right here, and my client's property is the five acres right here. Sorry, I'll leave that up there. So my client has been working with Deer Springs Village, which is the applicant, and is Mr. Gordon, who's also here in the audience today. He's been working with them for about 18 months to develop the 10 acres and the five acres together. So I'm just going to put a couple of items up on the overhead. I promise I'll be quick. The original plan that the parties agreed to, although it was not public hearing, but this is the original plan they agreed to, I just want to point out a couple of things. Mosaic Land's property is here, the 10 acres are here, Deer Springs, Huallapi, with the grocery store and the entire site being oriented towards Deer Springs. The site that you have before you today, tried to match up the colors. Again, Mosaic's property is here, Deer Springs, Huallapi, the grocery store is now oriented towards Huallapi. This does not look like what the parties agreed to. It's not in conformance with their joint development plan. The west, you know, the west 10 acres, which is the properties before you, is now oriented towards Huallapi, and the anchor tenant is being pushed all the way up against this property line. It's damaging to my client's property in terms of my client's visibility, grading of his site, and essentially the developability of his site. So we're here to object to the applications, and we would like you to follow staff's recommendations regarding items 35 through 39.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Adam Shepherd. I live at 6797 Bristol Falls Street. The first thing I would like to go, I'll just go down this as quick as I can since I'm limited on time. The car wash, the adjacent commercial lot across Deer Springs was approved for a car wash. I don't see a need for a second one. They're noisy, they can cause pollution into the water, as well as being somewhat of a waste of water. I don't think we need to. The second issue is the orientation of the buildings. I don't see any reason why they can't orient the back of the grocery store to 215 as opposed to the residential areas. Grocery stores are smally, they're loud, lot of traffic behind them. I don't think there's a reason that they can't do that. The third issue, and the biggest issue, is allowing the tavern. Huallapi is the main walkway from students in that area to the high school. The reason for these buffers is to have a least effect on schoolchildren as possible. There is no safety reason, or there's no reason, in the matter of public safety, that this should be approved. Taverns have historically caused higher rates of crime, higher accidents, and would be putting children at risk, allowing this so close to the school, especially in an area that's funneled directly to the school. I'm sure Commissioner Moody is familiar with the area to a point, right? You know that that is the only way to and from Centennial High School for these kids, and to have to be subjected to what would be a public safety hazard for them is, should rightly be unacceptable under any circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again, Commissioners. My name is Bridget Salvi. I reside at 7030 North Conquistador Street. About this project, it has a long history, yes. I'll try to hit just a couple bullet points. I was talking with Mr. Gronhour earlier before the meeting, before this item came up. The grading plan is still in the works, and that is a large determining factor on how this whole project will present itself visually, where there will be barriers, how the trees will work, how the lighting will inhibit the residential in the area that is older residential. Granted, it's further back, but all the Providence folks are thinking about, what's my neighborhood going to look like when I'm driving home? Is it going to look kind of trashy, or is it going to look well-thought? So the grading is a huge issue. As to the car wash orientation, we've asked that it be rotated 90 degrees. Staff had commented that it should have been rotated 90 degrees. I can see there's a parking issue with the rotation, kind of a self-imposed hardship. But if the grading is cut sufficiently, and this is my personal opinion, if the grading is cut sufficiently on the Deer Springs side where the car wash blowers blow to the north, and with the increased landscaping that Mr. Gronhour has indicated with the thicker trees, that couldn't be such a bad problem after all if the grading provides a dirt berm. As to the tavern, that raises issues on both sides. Some are for, some are against. My only problem with the tavern is, could there be an additional condition on the edge of the landscaping right near the tavern, maybe, and I haven't measured it, maybe 50 feet or 75 feet from that corner, which is that furthest southwest corner, put a wrought iron fence in additional to the landscaping to provide a barrier for the school kids that might want to just cut down the grass berm into the parking lot. It'll keep them away from the tavern. I hear my timer is up. The other thing that I would like to mention is no LED lights flashing, you know, blaring lights on the tavern wall, visual problem, and the pylon signs on street side. I'm not sure what the code is because I haven't read that deep into the weeds, but can the pylons on Deer Springs and Huallapi be at minimum height, maybe this, four and a half feet, so they don't become a visual dinosaur? Thank you.
Name and address.
Thank you. My name is Mark Kornheiser. I'm at 9726 Guiding Light Avenue. I have a copy here of the neighborhood meeting that the developer put on for us. Unfortunately, when they gave this presentation, it was nothing like what you saw here. They came through with three people. One person was taking notes. They took our name, our email address, our phone number. Basically, these people knew nothing. They held up little charts. We asked all sorts of different questions, and this is the presentation to the community. They said, "We will get back to you. We will get back to you. We will get back to you." They have my phone number. They have my email address. Never got back to me. On a critical point, this is going from residential to commercial. Traffic is going to be impaired. We said, "How about the traffic study?" They said, "The traffic report has not been done." Well, the meeting was September 28th. 13 days later, they were scheduled to be here before you. Now you know that they had to have the traffic report in to staff. They had to have the packets ready for you. This is not true. They had the traffic study. They promised to send it to us. To date, they have not sent it to us. I noticed from the presentation now, they represented, they said, "We're going to bring a restaurant into this area." And as you see on their application, it isn't a restaurant. It's a tavern. It's a bar. And the bar they're locating, the closest to Huallapi, the area that the students, I went today, the students from the high school, they travel right along. Why would you put a tavern, asking these students to walk right by it, tempting them? The beer and wine store on the corner, again, tempting these students. These are inappropriate applications. Much closer, you require 1,500 feet. This isn't half the distance. This isn't a quarter of the distance. This is much closer. It's endangering the future of our children in this area, and what more could be planning usage but this future of our children. Thank you for your attention.
Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mr. Gronhour, if you'd like to have a rebuttal, keep it short, please. And Mr. Grownhour, if you'd like to have a rebuttal, keep it short, please.
I'm just gonna point out a few things here fairly quickly. One of the first people in opposition is the adjacent property owner, the representative as mentioned. Look, unfortunately, at the end of the day, private issues are private issues. I know my client and her client are continuing to try to work something out from a potential commercial development. This has another 30 days to go to city council. I know they're gonna continue to try to work on some form of solution, resolution if they can, but the bottom line is, private issues are private issues. We're looking here at the issue of the entitlements itself, of what's being proposed for the shopping center. As far as the circulation of students who walk by the property, I personally haven't been out there to see people walk by, but it's something that we'll look at to address any issues. I think as Ms. Solvi said, if there is, needs to be, or can be some type of barrier over here, we could look at doing that and working with staff to see what is, what can work in that area. But to be quite frank on this, we believe that the shopping center that's here, it's a very good taste, if anything. Just give you some of the elevations that you can see of the shopping center itself. And again, these exceed your design guidelines, development standards of your typical shopping center of what you see. So we don't believe that the uses that are proposed within the shopping center here is gonna compromise anything. A matter of fact, as I started the conversation here, is this was supposed to be a bigger area of commercial. It has now gone down and shrunk, and where we are is down to 10 to 15 acres in this general vicinity. And we'd like to move forward with the shopping center that we're proposing.
Thank you very much. Turn this over to Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a lot of things I wanna say on this. This has been a long journey. I know the applicant, as well as many of those in protest, have met many times with the Mayor Pro Tem's office. I am in support of this project for a number of reasons, and I wanna state what those are. First, it has been previously approved for a shopping center, and I believe it remains appropriate for the commercial use that you're asking for today. I'm okay with the variance because of the unique position of this related to the Beltway with that adjacency. I'm okay with the zero-foot landscape buffer because of the access. I think, Mr. Grownhour, you called the joint development plan a private issue. I appreciate Ms. Sirokak's comments, but I think it's a legal issue. It's not one for the Planning Commission. That's one for you guys to work out if they believe it's contrary to the plan that you've previously worked out. It's inappropriate for us to consider that. I also wanna point out that across the corner at Deer Springs and Walupi, that's also changing commercial. So I think this happens to be consistent and would provide a good buffer between the 215 and the Providence community. Mr. Gordon's experience and reputation in our community leaves me satisfied that we're going to have a good product as the result of this. So for those reasons, you will see my support on this, and I'm actually excited to recommend another standalone grocery store in Las Vegas. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Is a question to the owner of the property next to you, that you've been working on an agreement for 18 months. Is that person still around?
Yes, sir.
During that 18 months, have you ever signed anything that says, "You do this, we'll do that, and that's an agreement"?
Okay, so I was just retained today on this. It is my understanding that they did have agreements regarding the joint development of this property.
Gentleman's handshake or signed documents that are legally enforceable?
I believe both. And I'm sorry, my client, Mr. Shetler, is standing here. He could probably answer that better than I can.
Same question.
Thank you, everybody. We did have a-
Sir, can I get your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Vincent Shetler, 3960 Howard Hughes Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada. We did have a signed agreement to do the actual zoning. What wasn't mentioned here tonight in a short period of time was, these properties were combined residential zoning. I agreed to change the zoning to do commercial when I could have sold this property a long time ago. We had jointly, before he owned the property, with the previous owner, zoned the property residential. He came in at the very last minute, 10 days before the tenant of MAP was approved, bought the property, and then needed my assistance to get rid of the commercial zoning that I spent two years getting approved. I know two years sounds a lot. It took me two years to get the thing approved for residential. So going forward, I worked with Mr. Gordon very closely, worked with Mr. Gordon very closely even until the last couple of weeks, and then certain people reneged on agreements that were in process. Attorneys were retained to write up the joint venture agreement to satisfy the ingress/egress, the joint development of the property, make everybody happy, and then it was thrown out, ripped up, and done away with. So, which necessitated my need to bring in-
So to paraphrase your presentation, the answer's no.
No, for what? We agreed, we have a written agreement-
There's no signed agreement that addresses it today.
We have a written agreement-
That's been torn up, or what?
For the specific approval of this land use plan with ingress/egress.
For residential?
For the commercial.
For the commercial?
For the joint development of the commercial. Then he turned the site, completely, excuse my French, screwed my site. During the process, added 16,000 additional square foot of commercial from the original site plan that was approved, jointly approving our 15 acres, which necessitated needing more parking. Then they pulled the building back into our previously agreed road that goes through the site here. He's now got the building inside that right away, and all at my detriment. I've gotten, my property's damaged because of this. I still, despite all this, came to him with certain proposals to mitigate it. We agreed on many of those proposals. We're going forward, and then just throw it through the-
Sir, if I can just interject real quick, and Commissioner Trowbridge, if you don't mind. I just had a quick question for Brian Scott in regards to this issue and being a private-
A lot of this appears to be a private issue with regard to these two entities having an agreement, now not having an agreement, or may have an agreement, so that part you can't get involved with. So this is really kind of going off the agenda a little bit, so.
Sure. I understand.
I was coming to that conclusion myself. Thank you.
I asked for a 30-day abeyance. I met with Mr. Gordon right before this meeting. I met with Councilman Ross this afternoon, asked for 30-day abeyance so we can work out those issues, but nobody seems to care, so that leaves me here with having to retain-
I appreciate your comments, but the public hearing's closed, so we're gonna go ahead and-
Sure, okay. You asked.
Thank you. Mr. Grownhour, did you have any last comments?
No, out of all due respect, what your city attorney said, I was gonna say the same thing. I didn't wanna bring Mr. Gordon up, and it gets a he said, she said. It's a private issue, that private issue will be resolved in some way, somehow. We're here on the zoning, and we'd ask you to approve the application as submitted.
Vice Chair Cherry.
Through the chair. I will be supporting the application. I think the applicant is justified, and all the requests are reasonable, so we'll see my support.
Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, can we get a motion?
Yes, thank you. Item 34ZON67938, motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's on the floor. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Item 35VAR66443, my motion is for approval.
That motion carries.
I also move for approval of item 36SUP66444.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Move to approve item 37SUP66445.
That motion carries.
Item 38SUP66446, move for approval.
That motion carries.
Item 39SDR66447, move for approval.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Is that with the revised condition as read?
With the revised condition number five, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor with the revised condition number four?
Five.
Five, thank you. Motion carries.
I move to approve item 40VAC67939.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
And finally, item 41TMP67941, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 34 through 41 will be heard at city council meeting on February 15th, 2017.
Thank you. And seeing that we have been going for about two and a half hours, we're gonna take about a 10-minute recess and then-
Good evening, everybody. This meeting is called back to order. And we'll go back to item number eight. We have a correction to be made and ask the director to make a clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realized on Agenda, uh, item number eight, uh, abeyance, TMP six seven three six six. I had announced that, uh, the item was final action unless appealed to the City Corp's Office within ten days. Please make a correction. Again, on item eight, TMP six seven three six six, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Corp's Office within seven days.
Thank you. Moving on to item forty-two, GPA six six four nine three, applicant owner, bus yard properties, LLC, et al., for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from C. D. Plan Community Development and via public facilities to M. D. M. C. West residential. On the west side of Shunder Road, South Banra, Ward six Ross, staff recommends approval. Item twenty-three, Z. O. N. six six four nine four, for possible action on a request for rezoning from you under the P. C. D. Plan Community Development, general plan designation in C. D. Civil to Ward three, medium density residential, Ward six Ross, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment rezoning only at this time to our possible future development of multifamily residences. Site development plan review will be required. The site is located at Calhoun Avenue, two fifteen, Anne and Chamba Roads, Clark County District, Washington. The west is land that was recently annexed to the city, out to the right, actually, as a station area. The designation is brought down to the development with the company of the more teams using this. Not protected with median area and classified residential, anticipated to the west. Staff is supporting the request.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stephanie Allen, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza here on behalf of the applicant. If I could direct your attention to the overhead, this is, um, there we go. This is fifteen acres, as Peter mentioned, located just to the west of the two fifteen. Anne Road is, realignment is located right here where the bridge over the two fifteen will be located. As they mentioned, there's a gravel pit located to the south and to the west of the site. There's the Clark County Bus Yard located to the south as well. And really, there's virtually no development other than that in this, in this general area. The request is just for the GPA amendment and the zone change at this time to multifamily. We'll be coming back through with a site development plan review that'll be publicly noticed and have another public hearing on that application at a later date. But with that said, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This was, uh, notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the commission for discussion and possible action, starting with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I happen to agree with staff on both the GPA as well as the rezoning, and I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, please do.
Motion on item forty-two, GPA six six four nine three, is for approval following staff's recommendation.
Please vote. And that motion carries.
On item forty-three, Z. O. N. six six four nine four, my motion is also for approval following staff's recommendation.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items forty-two and forty-three will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, thank you. Moving on to, uh, item forty-six, GPA six seven nine one eight, applicant owner, the Conrad Rogers Group Incorporated, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from C. Commercial to Light Industry and Research. On the west side of Main Street, South Washington, Ward five, Barlow, staff recommends approval. Forty-seven, V. A. R. six seven nine one nine, for possible action on a request for variance to allow one hundred and sixty-six parking spaces where two hundred and thirty-two spaces are required and to allow no loading spaces where four loading spaces are required. Ward five, staff recommends approval. Sorry, correction, denial. Item forty-eight, V. A. R. six seven nine two zero, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where ten feedings required. Ward five, staff recommends denial. Item forty-nine, S. D. R. six seven nine two one, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed sixty-nine thousand five hundred square foot office and warehouse complex with a waiver to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer on portions of the west property line where eight feedings required. Ward five, Barlow, staff recommends denial. And finally, item number fifty, TMP six seven nine two two, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed one lot commercial subdivision. Ward five, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located between Main Street and the railroad tracks and is currently zoned M. Industrial.
Uh, sorry, uh, no, no talking from the audience. Uh, sorry, staff, please continue.
Uh, this request conforms to the proposed general plan designation of light industry and research and is consistent with the established development along this portion, or along this section of Main Street. Staff supports the request. In conjunction with the general plan amendment, the applicant is proposing an office warehouse development with variances to allow a structure to be, to be built to the property line along the north side of the property and to reduce provided parking by twenty-eight percent of the number of spaces required. In additional waiver of perimeter landscaping and exceptions, a parking lot perimeter landscaping are required. These requests are self-imposed and indicate that the site will be overbuilt, therefore staff is recommending denial of the associated variances, site review, and tentative map. If approved, the following conditions of approval for S. D. R. six seven nine two one should be revised. Number three, all development shall be in conformance with the site plan and landscape plan, date stamped January fourth, two thousand seventeen. Ann building elevations and floor plans, date stamped eleven twenty-eight sixteen, except as amended by conditions herein. And number six, an exception from Title nineteen point zero eight point one one zero is hereby approved to allow twelve parking lot trees where twenty-four parking lot trees are required. Please note that there are, or that there is an additional letter of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Landon Christopherson, twenty-eight eighty-five East Quill Avenue, here representing the applicant. Real quickly, with going through the site plan, the areas where we're asking for the variance for zero lot line is the, this area where we have the elevator shaft going in for the four-story building that would allow for the elevator use for the adjacent building, which is owned by the applicant. The landscaping or the other variance, which is the parking, which is two hundred and thirty-two spaces, doing, uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, fourth edition of parking generation, we actually got a hundred and seventy-two spaces, which will be required. And that's the worst-case scenario if everything develops as office. And if that was the case, then the spaces that we show as loading spaces, which don't meet the requirement but would meet the requirement for the development, would actually go back to parking spaces, so we'd actually have a hundred and eighty-one spaces. So we believe that we are parking appropriately based on I.T.E. standards. The other one is, uh, the, the trees along the railroad. We actually do have trees along the railroad, but due to some of the facts that the city needs a thirty-foot easement to run through the property, we can't have some of those trees inside that easement, so that's where staff is saying that those are not allowed. As far as the other parking trees, the twenty-four required, we're providing twelve. We can provide an additional eight with the addition of landscape triangles inside the parking, so we don't lose any parking, but we can provide those trees and willing to do so. Other than that, I'm concurred with staff's conditions and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. Sir, at this time would be a good time to come up if you'd like to speak. All right, thank you.
Mike Ganson, eleven hundred South Sixth Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. It's a, it looks like a good development as long as the parking and the egress to the properties addressed properly. And I'm for more development of this find in the downtown area to bring some vitality down there. So, thank you very much. That'll be it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing, wanting to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn this over to the commission. Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Moody.
My apologies.
Commissioner Krier.
Thank you. I have a question, a couple of questions for you. It's, you know, about the loading dock. Are you gonna be loading?
No, this is actually, uh, flex space. The, the roll of doors are ten by ten. We don't expect large trucks. We're talking like subcontractors, small businesses like architectural firms, kind of more of the professional side of downtown, uh, support.
Okay. And, uh, how come you said you can't have more trees along the easement because your, your staff indicates that you're significant reduction in number of required trees, you have a sixty-six percent deviation from the number of trees that you need to have?
Well, when we talked with staff, there was some misunderstanding on the parking structure itself, so they did revise it to say that there's twenty-four lot trees required. We're providing twelve. We'll provide an additional eight with the addition of those landscape triangles and, you know, so we provide one every six spaces, so we can do that and not lose parking. So that's where that, that's coming out. It's not really sixty-six percent. We'll only be four, short four trees.
Can staff give me a, um, verification of where we are then, if there's any deviations?
The addition of trees in triangles like that, I'm not sure if we can accommodate those within the parking spaces. Normally, when you have small triangles like that, it's an actual box that, that kind of fits in the middle of four spaces. In this case, we'd have a, a triangle that just fits into two, and it may cause those spaces to be substandard. So I'm not sure without seeing a plan if we can actually accommodate those triangles without impacting the parking spaces.
So it's not quite accurate, then? There's nothing solidified based off of the applicant's, uh, I guess, application, what he feels is the application. Correct?
Uh, well, at this point, based on the revised condition, it reflects the, the trees that are on the site to, uh, to reflect the twelve or twenty-four required instead of the thirteen where thirty-eight were required. So they, they were required to have fewer than, than was originally thought because of the structures that were there.
Okay. All right. I mean, I, I know where this project is. I drive by it all the time, where you're gonna go, and I've seen the gate up. Is that your gate? That's up there? The applicant put the gate up around there? The, the brown gate?
Correct. But again, that wrought iron that's along Main Street will be removed, as we're not doing any wrought iron along Main Street. What you're gonna see is the building and landscaping.
Okay.
The majority of it.
All right, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Trobridge.
Thank you. Parking in that area is at a, is at a premium. So, maybe for staff, the question is, is the parking, um, standard, is it based just upon the full six, sixty-nine thousand five hundred square feet? Or is it based upon the office portion having one requirement and the warehousing a different requirement? Seems as though it would be different requirements.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the, the uses are looked at individually in this circumstance. This is also outside of the downtown Centennial, so all of, the, the application, these standards do apply. There's no, um, relief as part of through the site review. Uh, we do have it office and then, um, broken out from, uh, Building E and then Buildings A through D as, uh, the parking requirements. And, uh, then we also have the additional loading space requirements.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Cherry.
Through the chair, and a question for staff. Sorry if I missed this. What was the easement that was talked about through the property, the city easement? Is that something we have?
Sure, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you. That's a public sewer easement, so, um, if you look on the map, kind of by Building D, there's a sewer line that runs right underneath the sidewalk, adjacent to that building, Building D. And so that's the area that we can't have any trees in because the roots can then get into the sewer system, and we're trying to keep trees out of, uh, sewer lines.
Uh, got it. Thank you. And there's no requirement to reroute this sewer, uh, so it's not running through the middle of someone's property? Uh, or not having a city easement, I guess, so it's, it's more private sewer and they have to deal with it?
It's a, it is a public line, so, uh, it's an existing public sewer line. And so we're not requiring them to relocate it, but rather grant us a easement so that we can go in and, like we do, maintain all the public sewer lines. They'll be allowed to tie into it with a lateral, um, but no, we're not requiring relocation.
Great, thank you. Seeing, uh, no further discussion, uh, ready for a motion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, through you. Item forty-six, GPA six seven nine one eight, I, um, recommend staff's, uh, go with staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Thank you. Item forty-seven, V. A. R. six seven nine one nine, I recommend approval.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item forty-eight, V. A. R. six seven nine two zero, recommend approval.
Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item forty-nine, S. D. R. six seven nine two one, I recommend approval.
With amended conditions? Excuse me, thank you. With amended conditions. Please vote. The motion carries.
Item fifty, TMP six seven nine two two, I recommend approval.
Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty will be heard at City Council meeting on February fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you. Moving on to relating items fifty-two through fifty-four. Uh, item fifty-two, Z. O. N. six seven seven nine eight, applicant owner, Alina Becker Trust, for possible action on a request for a rezoning, excuse me, from P. R. Professional Office and Parkin to C. One Limited Commercial at two three five three, two three six three, two three eight three, and two three nine three, Potosi Street, Ward one, staff recommends, uh, denial. Fifty-three, S. U. P. six seven seven nine nine, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed auto dealer inventory storage use, Ward one, Tarkanian, staff recommends denial. And relating item fifty-four, S. D. R. six seven seven nine five, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed auto dealer inventory storage use with waivers of the landscape buffer requirement to allow a seven-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter and a six-foot landscape buffer along the south perimeter where eight feeds required, to allow a fourteen-foot landscape buffer along the east perimeter and a nine-foot landscape buffer along the west perimeter where fifteen feeds required, and a waiver to allow the use to be located on sixty-foot local street where a hundred-foot primary or secondary thoroughfare is required. Ward one, Tarkanian, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff has recommended denial of the rezoning application, the special use permit, the site development plan review, as proposed land use is not compatible with the existing residential zoning districts and land uses to the north, northwest, and northeast. Nor can the proposed land use operate in a manner that is harmonious or compatible with the existing surrounding land uses. Please note, an additional letter of protest has been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jolene Thompson with B.T.N. Nevada, two seven two seven South Rainbow, representing the applicant. I also have the applicant here with me, Mr. Barry Becker. Very simply, what we have before you tonight is a zone change to C. One. This is an existing parking lot, existing landscaping. We do agree with staff's conditions. Like I said, I was gonna leave it short and sweet. If you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Thank you.
Barry Becker, fifty South Jones, Las Vegas, Nevada. You know, this was a parking lot that was originally required for the Las Vegas Athletic Club, which is just to the east, and, um, they no longer needed that, and so we've really had this just sitting empty for several years. To the west is additional, uh, I'm not sure if it's commercial or office, but there's multi-story office buildings and same, uh, to the south. Potosi is a cul-de-sac street. Nobody uses it other than the McDonald's House. And, um, we were hoping that you would, uh, send this on to the City, City Council with a motion for approval with staff's recommendations.
Thank you. This was notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over, uh, to the planning commission, starting with Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Becker. Good evening, um, Ms. Thompson. This is an existing lot, and these cars are already there. The, um, there will be no test driving, Mr. Becker, out of this lot of like cars for sale or anything like that. They're just gonna be stored there, correct?
Just, you're just inventory storage only.
Yeah, and I think if we, um, notice as planning commissioners, you're just a feed off from this and a, a little feed off from that for the landscaping, so pretty much everything's in place, as you said, and it's, it's the perfect spot for cars to be stored, but not to be parked in for test driving in that neighborhood. Because that's something my councilman, you know, just doesn't like. So, with that, I'm going, I'm ready for a motion if anybody else, um...
Commissioner Krier? Okay. No, I'm fine, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Regarding item number fifty-two, the rezoning of six seven seven nine eight, my motion is for approval this evening. Moving on...
The motion carries.
Uh, S. U. P. six seven nine nine, uh, my motion is for approval.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding the S. D. R. six seven seven nine five, my motion is also this evening for approval. Thank you.
Please vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item fifty-five, V. A. R. six seven six oh six, applicant owner, Mahavon, sorry, I'm probably butchering your name, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a eleven-foot front yard setback where eighteen feet is required for an existing carport at four thousand Red Pony Court, Ward three coffin, staff recommends denial.
Mr. Chairman, this item is before you as a result of a code enforcement action related to the construction of a carport within the front yard without obtaining building permits. If the applicant had sought a building permit, they would have been made aware of the requirement and development standards for such construction. There's no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by constructing a carport within the front yard setback without permit. Staff has recommended denial of their request. Please note, additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Larry Sanchez. Seventy-eight forty-four Soaring Brook Street. I am the engineer record for this particular structure. I'm here today to, excuse me, represent the client in respect to trying to get recommendations from staff on encroaching into the eighteen-foot setback, front setback, where we will, uh, cut back a portion of the trellis back to eleven feet. So we're acting for staff approval for this, as well as, uh, meeting architectural compatibility requirements for the trellis with respect to the house, existing residence.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, I want to say that you didn't butcher my name. You did it really, really right, and, um...
Okay. Can I get your name again and address?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Mihai Von, and, uh, my address is four thousand Red Pony Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one one zero.
Thank you.
Um, I tried to avoid coming in front of you because this is a awkward situation. I didn't want to get in trouble with the city, and I came in this uniform to show you that, um, I want to respect the laws and to do everything by the code. What happened is, um, after I was discharged, um, my mom died, and, um, the pain was unbearable, and, um, I wanted to do something about it to, uh, try to avoid, um, crashing me, and I, I was thinking, there is no H.O.A. I can apply what I learned in military. In military, I was a C.B. And, um, I have here a lot of diplomas and, uh, student of the year and, uh, honor student and my, um, certs and so on. Right now, I'm, um... Right now, I'm a wireman journeyman with the local patrick five-seven in Good Standing. And I'm here to tell you that the construction is based on all the engineering requirements. And most of all, I wanted to beautify the city. It's awkward because I got in trouble due to the fact that I wanted to participate to improve the community. And instead, I am in this situation where I'm on your mercy to let this construction to be on or off. And I have here to show you, it doesn't bother anybody. I went as directed to my neighbors to ask them if they approve. And they didn't have any objections. I think I have over a hundred, all my neighbors on the street, they agree. The construction doesn't bother anybody. There is plenty of space around it. And I don't know if you like pergola, but this is what I wanted to do. I wanted to, I watch on internet what people they like to beautify. You know, I choose to buy the house, buy the park because I like the nature. And I thought that this construction will integrate perfectly. And I have some pictures here. Actually, I just slept the last three days trying to prepare for this because I didn't know what I get into. And I have seven folders with all the documentations and everything. But we are here for three hours already. I don't want to prolong too much. So what I request now from you is to please give me the chance to make this house a paradise. I bought already the waterfall falls. And in spring, my garden, I didn't see anywhere. I have flowers in three colors by the flag. So I want to respect the colors. And I bought flowers which are white, red, and blue. And with this waterfall falls and the construction I made will be a very nice environment, very beautiful. And around the house, there is no any objections. I have all the signatures from the neighbors. And please, if you agree, this is my.
All right, thank you. This was notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ma'am, did you want to come up?
I'm sorry, I'm new to this, but I just want to know, are you going to go back to forty-four and forty?
Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Deborah Adamy. Deborah Adamy.
Address?
Fifty-six seventy-three Gilbert Lane. I've been here for three hours and you skipped over forty-five and forty-four. Are you going to go back to it or are you going to hear it?
Forty-five and forty-four was held at the very beginning of this meeting. During the housekeeping items, we.
Forty-four and forty-five was?
Yes, I made an announcement at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, did you deny it?
It will be at the February fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, planning commission hearing.
Oh, okay.
March fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
March? Okay, March.
March fourteenth? Yeah, I must have missed that.
Yes, March fourteenth.
March fourteenth, okay.
Yes, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to the planning commission for.
I just have a quick question for you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, was this picture taken at Halloween?
It's, so kids, they like those.
Skulls?
Around and that's why I left it there.
For the trick-or-treaters?
Yes.
They're not up all the time, right?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question that I'll hear from Vice Chair Cherry here in a second. But what were you saying that you're willing to cut back eleven feet off of the?
Correct.
Structure?
Correct. Right now, the pictures that showed at the beginning of the presentation showed the carport pretty close to the front sidewalk. And I've met with planning and zoning and to appease the setback distance, we don't want it to be any sort of fire hazard or any sort of obstruction to public pedestrians walking by the sidewalk. So we are willing to bring it back some as well as make it architecturally compatible with the existing house. Meaning putting some sort of concrete, I'm sorry, some tile component along the sides to match the architectural compatibility. As far as the structure is concerned, we want to, you know, obviously apply for building permits and whatnot. But first, we need to see if we can get the setback resolved. And again, another reason why the residents built this was next to the pictures, there's a few palm trees that shed off their branches. And he was out there a couple of times and they've kind of fallen on his car or near him as I was getting into his car. So I don't say he got majorly injured, but he kind of created the structure, the trellis, to kind of break the fall of these branches off the palm trees. But what we're trying to do is to make sure it's not an eyesore to the public as they come down the cul-de-sac. So we're trying to make it, again, architecturally compatible as we can and not include too much into the setback distance. That's why we're willing to cut it back.
Yeah, because it's all the way up to the back of sidewalk.
Yeah.
So anyways, no further questions, Vice Chair Cherry?
Through the chair, I had the same comments that if the applicant was willing to take it back and it looks like you have a detail that ties it back into the house, so it's architecturally compatible. I guess what would be the process, maybe a question for staff? Do we need to hear a variance and vote on it? Or is there a different process that can get them there with maybe a timeframe associated with it?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman. The variance is for eleven-foot front yard setback, which is depicted on the submitted site plan versus what's shown in the photo. My mistake, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for you. Was this original carport trellis that you, was that originally approved or is that a self-build that you just did yourself?
It was no carport originally.
I realize that. The house wasn't sold with that carport when you built it. Did you, were you required to pull permits or anything that, did you, and that was approved or it was not approved?
Well, again, it was under the impression of the homeowner, thinking that he could beautify his property, that he thought it was going to be okay. So he wasn't aware of pulling a permit process until code enforcement came out and said, hey, you need to pull a building permit or.
So he just came out and built this?
Yes, thinking it was no harm. But now that he realizes he needs to get a permit, he's willing to go through the process.
And you say that you have some type of notice from your neighbors?
Yes, we have several letters, correct.
So you have copy of that?
Yes.
Can I see it?
I have several of them.
They are individual ones?
I have the original two.
I don't want to see all of them. You don't have a summary, something that says?
These are the originals and I have seven, eight folders with.
I don't want to see eight folders. Say what? Maybe you can take it, just quick, go to someone else with a quick, I just want to make sure, take a look at this. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. I mean, if, my feeling is if the applicant can get to what is being depicted in this drawing that Mr. Sanchez has put forward, I can, I would be able to support the application.
Thank you. Yes, Chairman Moody.
Former chairman. You're the chairman.
It's like this whole twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. I keep labeling everything twenty sixteen. So for a couple more meetings, you're going to be Chairman Moody. So Commissioner Moody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Pohn, you're not going to like what I have to say about this. One of the principles that we have to follow as a planning commission is to look to see whether this is harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood. I don't doubt that you're a gifted engineer. I mean, this is really cool, to be honest with you, but it doesn't fit in this neighborhood. If you want to build something like that, you need to go find a custom home somewhere outside this area. You know, you've built something that just doesn't fit here. You've put a white picket fence around your property. You've put a gate on your driveway. Everything about it just stands out like a sore thumb. And for those reasons, understanding completely what it is you're trying to do, you just, I'm not even close to giving my support on this. You could have come in with a letter from every neighbor in your neighborhood saying it's okay and it doesn't change my opinion about it. So I'm sorry, but you won't see my support on this.
It's okay, sir. Your name says everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Just a follow-up. Yet those letters, you know, do say they support it. And I am in concurrence with Commissioner Moody. If there is no, there is no harmonious compatibility with what you built to what the home is and the homes of the neighbors. Now, if you're going to build a carport that was stuccoed, that was roofed in the same tile, same colors, and extension of, then I would say, you know, you could possibly have my support at the eleven feet. But this is literally outside of the scope of, I believe, the intention of what the neighborhood was built for. And next thing you know, you're going to have people building whatever they want out front. And that's not harmonious to what the neighborhood is supposed to be. So I can't support it as well.
Yes, Commissioner Joe Rich?
Thank you, Chairman. While obviously it would have been best to get approval ahead of time. You know, the fact that you did go and get the support of your neighbors, saying that they supported your efforts. The comments that my colleagues have said to the negative are, while they're true, I still am going to give preference to the people in the neighborhood. So if they like it, I can handle it too. Because there's no safety issue involved in terms of blocking people that are making turns. That's normally the kind of problem we have here, is that they'll build something like this on a corner lot and the people trying to turn one way or the other's vision is blocked. You're not blocking anybody's vision. And if the neighbors like it, so do I.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You did say you were willing to follow the commissioner of the ward's suggestion to, you know, move that thing so it's not over the sidewalk and make it look a little bit better so it's not hanging over the sidewalk.
Absolutely.
I'm going to support you tonight because here's the thing. Every once in a while, you just got to go out of the box. You have no complaints. You didn't do it the right way. But you know, sometimes it's okay. And for me tonight, it's okay. Thank you.
Just for the record, what I'd like to say is we'd like to make it as architecturally compatible as we can. We're willing to put a tile component along the sides to match the tile that's on the house. We're going to stucco the columns to match the color and the color scheme of the house. We want to do anything we can to make it compatible as much as we can so it doesn't stick out like an eyesore. Understanding that it's wood.
Thank you, sir. Unless if somebody has a question, public comments over.
Through the chair, knowing that with the tile coming on that and this thing being taken back to where it's more architecturally compatible, I'm prepared to make a motion on item number fifty-five, VAR six-seven-six-oh-six, a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions and knowing that we're going to stick to this plan.
Thank you. Here's the motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item fifty-five will be heard at City Council on February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Moving on to item fifty-six, VAR six-seven-eight-three-seven, applicant owner, Gary L. Border Living Trust, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow zero-foot side yard setback where three feet is required, a four-foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required, and three-foot distance separation from the main building where six feet is required to allow an accessory structure that is not aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling and to allow an accessory structure in the front of a primary structure for an existing three-hundred-and-twenty-four square foot accessory structure, class two, carport, Ward one, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item is before you as a result of a code enforcement action related to the construction of a carport within the front yard without obtaining a building permit. Aerial photography shows the structure was constructed sometime in two thousand and six. In view of the absence of any hardships imposed by the physical characteristics, it's concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and is thereby outside the realms of NRS chapter two-seven-eight-eight for granting, two-seven-eight, for granting a variance. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Please note additional letters of protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Gary Moeder. I live at twenty-seven twenty-five Merritt Avenue. Been there fifty years or better and I had this carport put up. I thought the people that put it up are contractors and did everything right fifteen, over fifteen years ago. And I've never had any problems with it or with anybody not liking it. So just trying to get it where I can keep it. I haven't got much longer to live, so I want to keep it for a few years.
Okay, thank you. Sir, do you, did you have any other comments, Ted?
Yeah, my name is Jim Thomas. I'm a contractor at seventy-two oh-one Westbrook. Here's actually a picture of the neighborhood right here, if you can see that. It's four houses down from Palace Station. And there are no, are no comments. We talked to the neighbors and they're all kind of forward. The neighborhood, I guess you could call it an up and coming neighborhood. Everything else is pretty trashed, actually. And the house that Gary has here is probably the gem of the neighborhood, including that. And like he said, I don't know how long he's going to be driving. He brought me because I'm the young guy. He's eighty-one, I'm seventy-five, so I carry him. But I think if he just have it for a while, I'd be even good. He's not going to be driving for more than five years, I wouldn't think. So I kind of hate to see him lose it and lose his car. That's his pride and joy is his car that's underneath that carport.
Okay, thank you.
So that's about it.
This was notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Please come forward, sir. Are you here to talk on this item? Are you here to talk about this item? Can you come forward? Name and address for the record.
Ron Rockwell at twenty-eight twenty-one Merritt. Yeah, this is, I brought drawings here that I did my carport and this was the final building. The final on it was done on four thirteen ninety-four.
Sir, just one second. If I could ask you gentlemen just to back up and maybe take a seat and let this gentleman give a presentation.
Okay. Yeah, the, I tried to talk to Gary earlier during the week and I gave him some ideas how to update it. And these here was the final on it. I'm also a commercial builder, certified engineer. And everything on mine, even with Curtis Steel, all the steel in mine was certified, even with the ASC Pacific Roof. The thirty-three-foot beams out of Pennsylvania were certified, laminated to carry twelve-hundred pounds per linear foot. And I built this way beyond code for safety. If you go down and look at this one, this violates safety codes. It's just, it's just a mess. It's an eyesore beyond. And I got all the drawings here if you guys want to see what real carport building's about. All these were certi, all parts to that were certified. Because I got two aircraft companies, a mining company, and I run three other businesses right here in the city of Las Vegas. And that is just unbelievable eyesore.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. All right.
I have pictures of that carport and it's not really an eyesore. It is relatively compatible with the neighborhood at this point. And it is structurally engineered, it's a kit and it was bought, it was purchased through Lowe's. All the engineering is still available on the thing. So it is pretty structural, it is from Lowe's.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. I'll turn this over to the planning commission, Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. I drove down your street actually this afternoon. I drove down your street, actually, this afternoon, late in the afternoon, just to check, and your yard is impeccable. The carport, you know, it's definitely not within code, but it's not a terrible eyesore. The one thing that is comforting to me is that it's a steel structure, not a wood structure. Am I correct, the, the carport's steel?
Steel.
Steel. And therefore, you know, if there were, it's too close to your house, but if there was a fire, the steel's not gonna catch on fire. Now, if it was wood, we'd have a bigger problem. So, because you've had it up for over 20 years, and because your house is one of the nicest on the street, I look forward to giving you my motion for approval this evening.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Uh, may we have a motion? Commissioner Quinn?
Yep. Regarding item number 56, uh, variance, uh, 67837, my motion is for approval this evening.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Barely.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on February 15th, 2017.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 57, SUP 67830, applicant Yvette Chappell, um, owner 5831 West Craig LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,337 square foot massage establishment, with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residentially zoned parcel, where 400 feet is the minimum distance required at 5803 West Craig Road, Suite 101, Ward 5, Barlow. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a massage establishment in a location that does not meet the minimum separation requirement from a protected residential use. As a result, staff has determined that the proposed massage use is not compatible with adjacent uses in the surrounding area, and is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello.
Can I get your name and address?
Yeah. Yvette Chappell, on 1924 Ashburn Drive, North Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you. You wanna tell me anything about your project, or?
Um, yes. Um, well, this is gonna be, like, my third business. I've been a massage therapist for 16 years. Business in the city, and then North Las Vegas as of April of 2016, and then I wanted to move to this location. I do have a clientele and everything. There is a massage school a few doors down. So, I, all going through licensing prior, I never had a, knew about the residential. There's a big, um, big wall, 'cause I enter and, and would leave out the, um, the back. So, there's a lot of parking up front, so no one would be in the back where there's a, there's a fence, and then some houses over there, there's trees, and so we can never really notice the residential area. So, we provide massage, facials, body treatment, so it's not just massage, but because it's massage, I have to have the establishment license as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
All right, thank you. This was advertised as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lex Anderson, 3709 Waterhole Street. I'm the historian for our little neighborhood association. Uh, from a land use point of view, it looks pretty straightforward. Uh, it's a legitimate business. Title 19 supports both regulation and special use requirements. The city, uh, Las Vegas Code ordinances has, like, six pages on this, so they spell it out, uh, in quite detail. Uh, there's three residents behind it that have an interest in this. Two of them are for it, one of them is against it. And of the, uh, businesses in the area, um, I couldn't find anybody who was against it. I tried to get ahold of the, uh, healthcare preparatory school several times, and couldn't get ahold of them. So, if the planning commission feels that the business is appropriate for a location, and if the operator, uh, keeps it professional, keeps it, uh, up on top, according to menu, it should do really well, it's a good neighborhood, should be a good market. That being said, it was mentioned by your on-the-way-home today, I noticed on the marquee of the healthcare preparatory school, that, uh, they advertise public massage clinic, 50 minutes, uh, $25, and we didn't know about this. You know, uh, the Title 19, the very specific, it says 1,000 feet between massage establishments. It doesn't say massage school, doesn't say massage business, it says massage establishments. Said, holy cow, Commissioner Creer has to know about this. So, I went home, grabbed my camera, took a couple of eight-by-five glossies, and, uh, sent them out to, uh, Joe Mitchell, sent them out to Joe Mitchell to get the Commissioner Creer, and also to, um, Peter Lowenstein, said, hey, I don't know what to do about this, uh, so, uh, leave it up to you. Um, I pretty much take it from there. Uh, it's taken the place of the old florist, uh, business that was there. And, uh, you know, if they keep it up to par and do a good job, uh, might be good for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ganson, 1100 South 6, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm in support of any kind of holistic kind of entrepreneurial effort in this community. Um, and I think some of the language involved with the separations of distances and stuff need to be abated. So, I'm in support of this kind of zoning, or this kind of business spirit in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission. I'll just go ahead and start and state that I feel with the, um, you know, it, it might not be meeting the distance separation, but with walking all the way around and getting around into the next community, it's, uh, quite a ways away, so I really don't have a problem with this. And, um, Commissioner Creer?
Thank you. I'm not sure if the commissioner's ready, but I'm ready to make a motion. I 100% support this.
Please do.
Thank you. Uh, Jen, item 57, SUP 67830, I, I recommend approval.
Thank you. A motion on the floor for approval?
I wanna applaud the, um, the applicant for your entrepreneurial spirit.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We welcome your business into our ward, and wish you much success.
Thank you so much.
All the best to you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, that, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 58, SUP 67911, applicant owner, Thorin Rogers, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a similar use where 660 feet is required at 549 East St. Louis Avenue. Ward 3 Coffin, staff recommends denial. Staff report, staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to operate a short-term residential rental unit that does not meet the minimum required distance separation of 660 feet from a similar use. There are three other short-term residential rental units within this separation radius, including one located immediately to the west of the site. Due to the required waiver, staff is recommending denial, as deuse is not compatible. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yeah, my name is Thorin Rogers, and I, I live at the, at 549 East St. Louis. And, uh, my name is Thorin Rogers. My residence is 549 East St. Louis Avenue. I travel a lot, and I'm only there part of the time, so what I was doing is renting it out as a short-term rental when I was out of town. And with the street it's on, you know, it's just, it just doesn't, there's a lot of other commercial businesses, there, it's a lot of crime, vagrants. It, it just doesn't really work as a single family, or, I, I don't think I could even rent it to anybody else. The prior owner, he had all sorts of problems with it, um, you could read all the police reports. I had to, I had to forcibly, um, you know, remove intruders from the house when I first moved in, and I, it, and every, everyone I've talked to in the neighborhood's been happy that I fixed it up, I've, you know, fixed all the broken windows, and, um, I, I don't think this is really harming anyone. You know, I, I don't, it's not a party house. I, I screen, you know, whoever's staying there. Uh, they have to, you know, maintain a curfew. I, I only allow a certain number of people to stay there. And then I, I'm there a lot of the times, too, and I have a security system, and I have people in the neighborhood that watch over the place, and you get ahold of me, you know, if anything's going on. And I've had zero issues besides, besides, uh, trying to get this approved.
Okay. Um, if you have no other comments, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Uh, anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, yes. Mia Rose, 1103 South 6th Street, um, between, um, Oki and Charleston, and then we go up to St. Louis. We have Airbnb at Bob Stupak's house, which is about four homes down from me. There's additional traffic there, too. I'm in what's called the historic district, and now Beverly Glen is now a historic district, and this borders right on it. And I know that the majority of the neighbors do not want any more short-term rentals, at least not bumper-to-bumper. And if this gentleman is out of town a lot, I don't understand how he could keep a good eye on it, especially if he considers his area a crime. We just don't need more traffic and, uh, people coming in and out, we don't know. And it is a residential neighborhood, and I'm really offended that he doesn't see that, because it's been there, that's one of the oldest neighborhoods in Las Vegas. And that's, I'm hoping that you won't let, let this go, like, 'cause it's short-term, it's like little motels, and we have enough hotels, motels in, in this town. So, I'm hoping that it doesn't pass, where we can have them every few feet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Ganson, 1100 South 6, uh, Las Vegas, Nevada, Vice President, John S. Park, Neighborhood Board. So, uh, it's a tough one. Yeah, we're, uh, dealing with the blight, especially, and even on Bob Coffin's own street, we've got boarded-up houses all over the place. And then we have other people that have come in here, corporations have bought property. Uh, we, I think, just with the idea of having, um, the short-term, running these short-term rentals, not a bad way to take, take care of your property. So, it's a, it's a tough call to make. Uh, some of the residents in my neighborhood are for it, some are not. We really have not been able to have a community meeting and decide on the idea. So, uh, you know, me, me personally, I am for it, but I, speaking for the residents, I think that, uh, we should take a, a good look at these units. Uh, there are people that even operating some Airbnbs that aren't even listed on Airbnb, yet we see the people, uh, running laundry down our street for these places, and, uh, different license plates every day. But it's better than the, the situation of having the houses boarded up, and/or burned, or, uh, you know, criminal behavior going on there. So, uh, in respect, uh, we're in support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, seeing nobody else, and let the applicant come back up and have about 30 seconds, if you wish, before we...
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'm in a difficult situation, because I don't know what I would do if I had to, you know, leave the place, you know, unattended. I mean, with the, with the red, with the short-term rentals, I get a little bit of money from it, and I can afford to pay, you know, neighbors and, and helpers to watch over the place. I can call people, I, I have cameras, I have a security system, I can get people there right away. But, um, you know, if, and having the cars there in the driveway, that really keeps, you know, the riffraff from coming inside. And it's, you know, I, I mean, I really think in a few years, I, I hope it does become a nice residential neighborhood, and I plan to move into the house permanently in a couple of years myself. But, um, you know, at this time, I mean, I don't know if you, I'm sure most of you've been through St. Louis, it's, it's getting there, but it's not quite there yet. And I, I saw the, the staff, or the recommendation, they said maybe give it two years or something. I'd be open to that, you could give me a year or two, and then if the situation changes, if, you know, people are moving back in, is gentrifying, then, you know, I'd reconsider it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think if I can go first, Commissioner?
Sure.
Um, you know, I, we've approved a lot in other parts of, uh, my ward, and on the other side of Charleston, but it starts to get into a real sensitive area, you know, when we start talking about John S. Park, and Beverly Green, and, um, Mary, Mary Crest, and these old historic neighborhoods. And, I mean, right now, we're, we're needing a 660-foot, you know, distance separation, and we're asking for 0%. I personally like Airbnb. Um, when I go on vacation, I just was in Washington DC this past week, and, um, rented a 1,300-square-foot apartment for the same price that I could've got a hotel, and it was, it was nice. And, um, you know, personally, I'm not, not out there partying in, uh, in that particular Airbnb, but also have a community that I built downtown. And I was, um, surprised to find out this past week that three people had Airbnbs within a community that I built, and I started getting complaints, um, from not every time somebody was going in, but it was like every third person that was going in would throw parties and would keep, keep everybody up at night. So, considering that there's already three, um, in this little area, and there's one right next door, and it is a historic area, and I do drive down St. Louis, and a lot of the houses are getting fixed up, I personally couldn't support this. Commissioner Quinn?
Uh, thank you. Do you own the one next door?
No, I don't.
Oh, thank you. Um, well, first of all, I grew up at 1816 East St. Louis. My daddy bought that house in 1963, and he lived in it till about, maybe 1990. And, um, when I drive down St. Louis, I still see Fremont Junior High School, and I still see St. Anne's Elementary. And I remember when Jimmy the Greek and Ted Binion and everybody lived on Sixth Street, and this was my neighborhood, you have to understand. So, when you tell me this is not a neighborhood, it's all going to, you know, to no good, you're hurting me, because I see it only getting better, okay? Right now, I'm fighting something around the corner from you, and it's not even my ward, okay? So, here's the thing, um, there's no other reason to talk about this with you except one reason. Zero feet is not enough. You have 600 feet, maybe, but to have two next door to each other, I wouldn't do that in my ward, that could be 10 acres apart, okay? So, bottom line is, I will not support this. I will be happy to make the motion for approval if you so choose, Commissioner, and, uh, if not, then the other commissioners can talk. I guess...
Um, yeah, if there's no other, um...
Great.
...comments, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh...
Yeah, so it's number 58, right?
Uh, that is correct.
Number 58. Um, and it's a special use permit for 67911, and my motion is for denial.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. And a yes vote is for denial. The motion carries, and the item is denied.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on February 15th, 2017.
Thank you. Moving on to item 59, SDR 67942, applicant owner, 3250 Spring Mountain Trust, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed single-story 8,660 square-foot building with a waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan setback and streetscape standards at the northeast corner of Park Paseo and Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends denial.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to partially demolish the northern portion of an existing building on the subject site, and construct a new inline retail building along the north property line. Waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan build-to requirement and streetscape requirements have been requested. have been requested. Staff supports the requested waiver to allow the building to be set back from Las Vegas Boulevard as this would allow room for installation of the required streetscape elements, including a five-foot amenity zone and a 10-foot sidewalk. However, staff does not support the requested waiver of streetscape standards along Park Paseo. In addition, the proposal will provide only 45 parking spaces where 82 are normally required. Although locations in the downtown centennial plan are not subject to the automatic application of parking standards, this reduction in parking is significant as there is no parking allowed on Las Vegas Boulevard, and the parking available along Park Paseo is limited before it would spill into the adjacent residential developments to the east and south. The requested waiver and limited parking indicate that the site will be overbuilt and will not be compatible or harmonious with the adjacent residential development. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Through the chair, if I may quickly, I'd like to disclose I live within the notification area, but it doesn't affect me in any greater or lesser way. I will be voting on the application. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bradley, Mayor of Argenta Partners, 6077 South Fort Apache Road, Suite 130. Our firm is representing the applicant. If I could draw your attention to the overhead, I have a few boards I'd like to show you. First of all, I just want to draw your attention to what the site is that we're talking about and what it currently looks like. So this is Park Paseo Boulevard along here and Las Vegas Boulevard along the front edge. The entire site is comprised of this general area here. There's an existing roughly 8,000-square-foot building on the site that was constructed in the early 1950s, constructed of cinder block. And so, as staff just mentioned, there's a proposal to demolish a portion of this building. And so when I get to that on the site plan, it's roughly, you know, this area of the building would be demolished, and that demolition permit was secured for that in September and will not affect the structural integrity of the building in any way to do that. And another thing to point out, this existing building is completely vacant except for a existing SOB in the middle of the, of the building here. There's actually four tenant spaces, only one of them is occupied at the current time. This right here just kind of shows the back of the building again. You saw the overhead, but, you know, a huge vacant parcel along the back, you know, a building that is dilapidated that we would like to, you know, improve this site. And so I'm gonna get to the site plan in just a second. This is an actual rendering of the building that we would hope to construct on the site. This is the view from Las Vegas Boulevard. It sort of has an Art Deco style to it in the spirit of some of the downtown centennial plan south requirements, you know, depicts a couple, you know, some tenant spaces along here and a space out front. So this is the site plan as submitted. So as I mentioned before, it does show that a significant portion of the existing building on the site is demolished. This, this right here is sort of an outline that shows kind of the existing site, and there's existing surface parking to remain. And so this, then again, on Las Vegas Boulevard and Park Paseo, showing the construction of the new building here, which would be roughly 8, 8,800 feet. And then I wanted to address a couple of the issues that were in the staff report on this, a couple of things. So there's an exist, there's two entryways off of Park Paseo now. We would propose to close one of those, move the main entryway onto here. I'm gonna show you kind of an alternative sort of site plan on the back that addresses some of these, but we have an idea to address, you know, one of the things the staff mentioned is that traffic coming out of Park Paseo, we're certainly cognizant of that. And so either making this a one-way entrance only to force all traffic out on the Las Vegas Boulevard, or making this, you know, putting a left-hand turn-only sign here, you know, to deal with that. Now, the other thing is, we're requesting a waiver of the zero setback requirement along Las Vegas Boulevard on our property line, and mainly that's, and that is something staff is supporting, but mainly the reason for that is because our property line actually extends into the sidewalk. And so we cannot give a 10-foot sidewalk with 5-foot amenity zone if our building actually goes all the way to have a zero setback. And of course, the placement of this building brings it in line with the existing building that's on the site. Another thing, another waiver that we had requested, but if I can kind of turn this over, we talked with staff since the staff report came out, one of the waivers we had requested was the streetscaping. I mean, I think that we would request that that waiver, you know, that maybe there could be a condition put on this as approval, that we would do the landscaping now along Park Paseo. As I described earlier, this depicts sort of a one-way entrance and, of course, depicts the landscaping that now would exist along Park Paseo. This also shows one of those original parking spaces go, going away so that there's enough space for somebody to back out and pull back out of here. The thing I'll mention about the parking, so obviously based on the amount of square feet that this is being calculated upon, you know, staff would look at that and say that, you know, 85 spaces, roughly 80 spaces are required, and we're only providing 45. However, there's an existing, you know, as I mentioned before, there's only one tenant in this existing building, rest of the building is vacant. It's been, it's been vacant for quite some time. It's sort of hard to lease out, given its state, its current state. And so there is a scenario, of course, on this as well that I mentioned. Well, one more thing I want to mention before I get into that is that staff initially had some concern that somehow this parking access was restricted. I think it was just there was a line on the old site plan, just kind of showing the existing sort of building, you know, piece of property for the building. And so there was no idea to put any curb or anything there. There's gonna clearly be access into here. But there is a scenario in which this existing building may be demolished at a current, at a further time, and then this, we would come back in front of you for another site development review for pad site here. We've had some conversations with some national tenants about that that are, that are well-known and that we would probably have a pad site in here, and we think we can get a lot, you know, about similar number of parking spaces, maybe even up to 16, 17 parking spaces around that pad site. It would be probably some, it could potentially be a drive-through type pad site as well for that. And so, again, we'd be interested in trying to do things to force traffic out on the Las Vegas Boulevard. And so, given that, I'm here to answer any questions, and we would ask for a recommendation for approval.
All right. This was no discuss public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While we wait, I just want to disclose that I have a previous relationship with Mr. Mayor. Very long time ago, he worked for my Senate campaign, but that was, I don't know, very long time ago.
Long time ago.
Yeah, 10, 12, 15 years ago. And so I don't believe there's any conflict, so I will be voting on this.
Thank you.
Barbara Ganson, I live at 1100 South Sixth, Las Vegas, Nevada. It's on the corner of Las Vegas Boulevard, Park Paseo and Sixth, so we're right down the street from this property. I would like to just let you know that I am for it. It'd be a great improvement to that particular space in general. It's been run down for quite a while. It attracts a lot of vagrants, and I think that'd be a great improvement for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mia Rose, 1103 South Sixth Street. I'm right at the T, so if you would turn down Park Paseo, I can view that parking lot and that decrepit building that's falling apart. And they're right, there's, I don't think there's even anybody in it, and the vagrants sleep out in front, and there's all kinds of drug dealings going on in the back. So I can see that from the front of my house every night. Although I put up enough bushes and lights, I'm okay. But I just think it's wonderful what they've designed and what they have here, and I don't know why anyone would be against it. I don't know all the codes for parking, but I do, I'm very happy with it as long as they do have the one-way in or out or divert from South Sixth, because we've got so much traffic on South Sixth now. And then the security and lights at night, and they all agreed that would be no problem. But this could be such a beautiful building on the corner, which right now is a really sad-looking corner. And I hope that you allow them to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Mike Ganson, 1100 South Sixth Street, which is a house that was originally built by Barbara Binion, the eldest daughter of the Binions, in the historic district down there. I've been a proponent for keeping the blight out of our neighborhood, and this has been an eyesore since I've moved there in 2000. I'd like to correct the record, please. There was a, on the previous meeting, David Figler had mentioned that there was a overwhelming objection against it. We never had a vote, there was never consensus. So, and since then, I have talked to some of our neighbors, and they're for it, and I am for it. And the idea that we need to be moving forward with this and clean the neighborhood up, and this should be done post-ace here, this has been far too long. We've got another problem there with Veterans Village and the 24/7 triage that's going on there, which is, you know, I'm a compassionate man, you know, I'm not denying anything, but it's all, just become a magnet for people sleeping and staying there around the area. Anyway, thanks very much.
Derek Stonebarger, 1248 Place. I live right up the street from this property. I'm actually gonna use the signage that's been provided here. I just wanna, I just wanna be clear on one thing so that everybody's aware of this. With the one tenant that is still operating, the Adult Video Superstore, it's my understanding that they actually own this property. And where it says signage here, this actually won't say signage, it'll say Adult Video Superstore. Now, I'm, I'm in agreement that we do need to clean up the corner and that there is prostitution and drug dealing going on behind the building right now, because I see it every day, because I use the street to go to my business. But I want to be clear that this, where it says signage, it's not gonna say signage, it's gonna say Adult Superstore. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's anybody else, I want everybody to come down to the microphone right now.
My name's C.T. Wong, 1133 Las Vegas Boulevard. Just next door is this, next motel on this property. Too many troubles, too many homeless every day standing, my wall, my front door, everywhere. One month ago, got a fire, homeless is cold. They fired my whole wall, about 30 feet, the wall is burning out. I just concerned something because this property, me property and his property before 1945 is same owner. My motel, six-room, the sewer line is on his property, this property. Now still use the 16-room, the sewer, still use this line. I just concerned, don't move my sewer line. I had easement, sewer easement in this property. Another one, just his building, this building is high, I have 16-room, no, no have sunrise coming. I must be, gotta give me a six-foot distance for the, for my room, my customer room, got the sunshine. Just yet.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll close this public hearing. Bradley, Mayor, if you would like 30 seconds, I'll give you 30 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just in regards to Mr. Stonebarger's comments, I mean, as code currently reads, nothing can be done with the bookstore in this existing building as of now. I think you recall that we were here in regards to text amendment issue before. We've been having continual dialogue with the neighborhood on that. That's the, that's sort of the, what I alluded to earlier when I said there's a scenario where this could eventually turn into a pad site. You know, I was at the John S. Park Neighbor Association meeting last month discussing that with them, and have had some continual dialogue, but as of now, you know, it could not actually locate in this building until that issue is settled. So this, that really discussion is separate and apart from this application at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for you. So the, the SOB on the corner, are you doing anything to the exterior paint or any kind of improvements just to make that look better?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's been a discussion that the neighborhood has mentioned, and I think that the, you know, the uncertainty, of course, around their, the original application had kind of meant, you know, we're sort of alluding to the fact that if, you know, if you're hoping to tear your house down, would you put a new roof on, kind of thing? But, you know, we, we have an interest in cleaning that building up for certain and making sure that, you know, clearly, when this is built, you know, as well, I mean, it has to look good in comparison to this, so there's no question about that.
Paint's not expensive.
Of course.
And, yeah, I like the, I like the building, and to answer the gentleman's question, I mean, how far off the property line are you gonna be away from his hotel? Well, how far off the property line?
There's five and a half feet separation, basically, between his property line, if you can, if on the overhead, if you notice here, there's a kind of a five and a half foot, you know, back, back way here, if you will, that we're...
And that's up to the property line, then there's a little bit of, a little bit more room on the other side of the property line?
Yeah, this depicts his existing motel, so there's, you know, there's a few feet there as well. So I think we're, I think he was asking for six feet, and it looks, it appears to be over that.
Appears to be six feet or more. And just to also address the gentleman's question, if he does have a sewer line and he does have an easement, then that's something that this gentleman will have to work with the city and preserve, so...
Correct. And we discussed that with staff in our pre-application meeting and the contractors here, and we know what we need to do to, they sent us a kind of a template easement, you know, agreement, so we know what we have to do in regards to that.
Perfect. I think it's a beautiful-looking building compared to what we have right now, so you'll see my support.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Through the chair. I will say, between the two different site plans, I think I prefer the second one that has the one-way and then the landscaping on Park Paseo. I do feel it's, it's quite the addition, which I would support, but with that, and it's underparked, you'll definitely have some, some cars parking down Park Paseo and maybe pushing into the neighborhood. And I've seen it down with the Pawn Star Shop down the street. They've had to kind of find auxiliary parking for their employees and staff and different people to make things work, and they make it work well. So for me to support, I'd like to see that second site plan pushed forward.
Sure. And Vice Chair Cherry, I mean, that, this is the kind of now-going-forward site plan we're working off of. I mean, it just wasn't able to be updated to the agenda, but we've talked with staff about it extensively, and so moving forward to council, this is what we're going to be, you know, hopefully presenting moving forward, and we'd be happy to accept any conditions that you'd like to place on this in regards to that.
Thank you.
Quick comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
So, so kind of dovetailing on the Vice Chair's comments, I kind of feel like these plans are evolving. Normally, in this situation, I would recommend obeying it for 30 days so that you can continue to work for, work with staff. I'm not inclined to do that. I, but I do think you can get closer to complying with both the setback requirements, the streetscape standards, as well as parking. And I'm voting no. It's a soft no, because I think, I think you can improve. Hopefully, you'll get it right before you get to City Council, but that's why I'm gonna vote for denial on this.
Okay, and just one, one last comment. And this is SDR for a proposed single-story 8,660-square-foot building with a waiver of downtown centennial plan setback and streetscape standards. And I did ask Bradley to go back and try to accommodate that and put, put the landscaping in, so that was one of the things that he did at the last minute to kind of make me feel more comfortable with the project. So that is one of the main reasons why I come up at the last second, but I do appreciate your comments as well. Looks like we're ready for a motion.
Through the chair, I would like to make a motion on item 59, SDR 67942. I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions and with the updated site plan that was presented to us.
Correct. And Mr. Lowenstein, could you help crowd?
Mr. Chairman, that was presented to staff this morning. I believe you should just make it with a, directing the applicant to work with staff to update the staff report versus a date stamp on a plan that we haven't fully vetted. It may still not meet the development standards, but it obviously is an improvement to have those landscaping there.
Okay. Okay, I can add that to the, to the motion, which would be just direction to work with staff.
And I have an extra copy of this, this new one that I can submit for the rec... And I, I have an extra copy of this, this new one, that I can submit for the record, if you so are inclined to take it.
We'll, we'll take it, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I, so I think what Mr. Lowenstein is saying is, the motion should be on the, the application is before you, right now, as it is.
Got it.
Great, so, to restate, item 59, SDR 67942, I'll make a motion for approval on it, knowing that we'll have direction with the applicant, working with staff, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at City Council on February 15th, 2017.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 61, Director's Business, TXT 68157, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to update the Downtown Centennial Plan to replace the current permitted use table for the 18B Las Vegas Arts District with a reference to the permitted use tables in Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 19, and provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff has been directed to draft an ordinance that eliminates the listed permissible land uses found within the Las Vegas Downtown Centennial Plan 18B, the Las Vegas Arts District, and to have permissible use tables denoted, denoted with, in, into the Unified Development Code. At this point, staff has no recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And if anybody else wants to be heard, please make your way up front.
Derek Stonebarger, 1240 Eighth Place. I have a business at 1225 South Main Street in the Arts District, and I have the recent elected board president of the Las Vegas Neighborhood Arts District Association. So, I just, I wanted to first of all, commend everybody on the Planning Commission, and Chairperson Schlotman, and, and Vice Chair Cherry, for their work that they've done, I know, over the past couple of years, trying to get this, all the, these, these uses, these use restrictions lifted. I myself have gone through special use permits, just to get my business open, and I look forward to, to having a lot of those uses eliminated, and becoming more like the other neighborhoods in the Downtown Centennial Plan. With one exception, I'm just hoping, I mean, I want everybody to realize that the city is spending over seventy million dollars on Main Street and the area for the one-way couplet. It's gonna be a fabulous place, it's where I made my, my investment on Main Street, and it's gonna be beautiful, all the parades are gonna run down there, the city's gonna maintain it, there's gonna be park benches and palm trees, and it's gonna be the heart of Las Vegas in just a few years. And the worst thing that could happen is that there could be several types of businesses that can now sneak up into the area, I believe, which are, there's five types, check cashing stores, bail bonds, pawn shops, sexual or SOBs, and vehicle sales or repair. So, what I'm asking is that it at least be considered that those five types of businesses, I know that they'll have to go through a special use permit, but there could possibly be, after speaking with city officials, Robert Summerfield and Tom Burkhart, that there could possibly be an amendment, but I don't really wanna slow the process down either, so, I'd love to move this forward, so, that's just what I wanted to be here today, to voice my opinion, and look to possibly have these five types of businesses excluded from what will be the heart of Las Vegas. Thank you.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Sir, may I ask you a question? You named five businesses, here I am.
Yes.
Hi there. Just wanted to ask you just your opinion on something, 'cause you are the president of the downtown thing, so-
The Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, that's fabulous, you had the five things that you don't wanna see down there.
Well-
I didn't hear recreational marijuana, so that's something you don't mind down in that area?
Like, me personally, I, I'm, I'm not really for or against it, I don't really know what it's, what-
I just wondered, 'cause we're gonna start looking at those, and I just wanna know your feeling on it. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm really trying to keep businesses that prey on failure of, of Las Vegas citizens out of our Arts District. There's nothing artistic about check cashing stores, bail bonds, pawn shops, SOBs, except in cases of pole dancing, there could be pole dancing classes, I mean, that's an art form. So, I'm open to some things, of course, but I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek.
Yeah.
I'm Becky Miller, 1233 South Main Street. I own and manage a block of Main Street, and I have gone on record as saying I still want the permitted use list, specifically to keep out undesirable businesses that have drug that neighborhood down. Many of us have fought decades, me included, decades, to bring this particular corridor of Main Street up out of the less desirable businesses that we had in the past, that did not bring thriving retail community and viable residences down there, or maintain them. So, having that said, I have spoke with Mr. Stonebarger about his particular idea of paring the list down, and I, I'm, I will go for that. Our list is difficult, it's long, every single one of my businesses has had to go in for a special use permit, over the decades that I've managed the properties down there, and that's, that's over thirty businesses that have had to go up in front, and so, yes, and that slows things down, costs a lot of money, makes it difficult, so, yes, we can restrict the list, I just don't wanna get rid of it completely. I'm in favor of what Derek has proposed. And for me, actually, I would rather add the medical marijuana onto that list as well. I, it's not that I'm against it, it's just for this particular district, I'm not so sure it's really great, but other people will argue against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Hunter, 1260 Eighth Place. I've just opened a business this year on South Main Street. My partner and I relocated from New York City, and it was really what was happening in the Arts District that attracted us to the area. I mean, Vegas locals now know about this area, whereas a few years ago, if they knew anything about it, they would describe it as a dangerous place to be avoided. And what we're seeing now is more tourists getting in taxis, coming from their hotels on the strip, to check out this thriving new artistic, antiques-driven artisanal craft hub of Las Vegas. I'm in agreement with Mr. Stonebarger that this is going to be the neighborhood in Vegas, and I think that all the small business owners in the area are just striving to open businesses that are meeting places for a community, and offer services to turn this into an actual neighborhood with a sense of community, and to allow check cashing places and bail bond places to be reintroduced into this district would attract the elements that would just return it to its dangerous, dark past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica Litback, 1306 South Third Street. Sorry I didn't get up earlier, my legs fell asleep. You need to comply with the new movie theater, and put recliners here, and food service, and things like that, to get us up out of our chairs. I'd like to see marijuana added to that list, too, as well. I don't mind if there's one or two scattered about, but I think when you start influxing the area with marijuana, whether it be medical, or whatever reason they use it for, I think it deters families from coming there. I mean, we want those families to come there, too, with their young people and children, and get involved in the arts, and the community, and things like that, so, I think that's a real deterrent. And I think there's enough drugs in the area without making it some legal places for them to go as well.
Thank you. If there's no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and turn this over to the Planning Commission, and I'll go ahead and start. I've heard from a lot of people in support and opposition of this, and surprisingly, overwhelming number of people that, that were in support. And I do understand, you know, the risk of marijuana, or the SOBs, or some of these other non-desirable places that you don't wanna see, a check cashin', or bills bond, but understand that every one of those would require a special use permit, so, it wouldn't be allowed by right, it would have to come back before the, the Planning Commission, and I don't necessarily think that those are, you know, the right businesses for the area, either. I did work with, so, the previous board member on the 18B Arts District, or, yeah, Arts, yes, whatever, he, he asked a group of people to get together and come up with a list of, you know, uses that they didn't wanna see in the Arts District, and this was about a year ago. And, so, there was supposed to be this big group of people that got together and come up with this list, and I showed up, and there's four of us sitting in a room, and so, we spent about two hours going through, you know, a few hundred uses, and saying, we don't want this, we would, we don't think this is appropriate, we don't think this is appropriate. And the purpose of that was to incorporate that into the new downtown master plan, which will be adopted as part of the 18B Arts District, portion of that downtown master plan. And a question for staff, will we still have that opportunity to restrict those particular uses when the Arts District portion of the downtown master plan comes before us?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see any reason why not. I think at that point, you know, law is being, or the ordinance is being drafted, that can be part of it.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the, the implementation of the 2045 Downtown Master Plan, when we began crafting the regular, regulations that go with the 18B Arts District, it's gonna be focused very much on the design, the form of the development, to make sure that we achieve a certain character, that the business owners and the folks who, who live in the area, hopefully there'll be people living there, quite a few soon, and are trying to achieve, and that is consistent with a vision, based on the input we've already received for that plan. So, the focus will be less on use, as we discussed at the workshop, nonetheless, use is still always gonna be a part of it, and those discussions will hopefully lead us to a solution that will work quite well, when you combine the use with the form, to achieve the kind of results that I think we're all looking for. So, yes, that opportunity is coming all of our way soon.
Okay, so, even though we're looking more at form versus use, we'll still have the ability to restrict certain uses?
Yes, thank you.
So, one of the main reasons why I see this coming forward is due to the fact that I think a lot of y'all might know Kalani, who grows herbs, and I met him years ago, and he wanted to grow herbs in the Arts District, and, so we had him do a text amendment to allow him to do that, and then, there's another text amendment for light industry, roasting, or something like that, Vesta Coffee, a place that, that we constructed, and, and they have a coffee roaster. And, so, another text amendment, just to allow a coffee shop to have a coffee roaster. And then, I've seen several other text amendments come through, you know, just to allow little things like this, that, that are insignificant, that will help our, our Arts District. There was somebody else here recently, that was wanting to do, give tours on segways to tourists in the Arts District, bringing more people down to the Arts District. I think that'd be great. Staff said there's no possible way to make that, that happen without a text amendment. So what we're doing is we're pretty much penalizing all the businesses that wanna go into the Arts District, if they don't fit perfectly within the permissible uses, so, now, they're having to go through a four-month process of getting a text amendment, and then another four-month process of getting their entitlement, so it's eight months, it's slowing down business, and I say, we, we're gonna look at each of these cases, on a case-by-case basis, if this is sexually-oriented business, a finance, financial institution, auto, title payday loans, and all that, all that other stuff, so, and then hopefully, by the time we get down to the Downtown Master Plan, and the Arts District portion of that, all of us can sit down and take a look at those particular items, and things that we wouldn't wanna see in there, but I'd be supporting it, just for the reason of helping out those, and just to say that we don't wanna see these five, there might be others, other people wanna, wanna put on that list, so, I think we really need to study that list before we, before we formally adopt that, so, that's my comments.
Through the chair. I live in the 18B, I have business in the 18B, we've developed in the 18B, it's been my home for over a decade now. When I saw this, I thought this was really the dismantling of the Arts District, until I really looked into it, and just to add on what Chairman Schlotman said, we've had to do all these text amendments, so this really gets us back to par, but I will say, I think there should be an effort, which, in my opinion, was a failed effort in the past by 18B, which I went to the meetings to watch, of having the chance of getting this thing right last year. It, it didn't happen, there was meetings that I attended, and a, a big effort that really went nowhere, so, if this does pass, and I would support this coming back to par with Title 19, I, I think there should be an effort pushing forward by the 18B group with, with the councilman coffin, to really look at solidifying some of those things, but yes, they could come back with a special use permit in the meantime, but if there's a will to make sure that just doesn't even have that option, because there is a, a charm right now, I mean, I have an eight-year-old son, I walk him in the 18B when he's in town with me, we go to a gallery, you know, we, we look at, we go to First Friday, and the last thing I want, through either lobby effort, or however it goes, is to see more bail bonds in that area, or check cashing in that area. And those businesses have its place, but I personally don't believe it belongs in the Arts District, so, it, it's gonna see my support tonight, but I hope that effort with the audience starts and happens quickly. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, can we get a motion?
I will make the motion on item number 61, text amendment 68157, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
All right, moving on to item number 62, DIR 68364, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on, on a request for the appointment of new members to the Downtown Design Review Committee. Staff has no recommendations. Can we get a nomination?
Are we nominating one or two?
One.
You're staying on?
No, it's a-
Wait a minute, I'm confused.
There is a, a new member that will be taking my position on the DDRC.
Oh, okay, and so, well, I'm getting replaced?
No, you will remain for another three years on DDRC.
What?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well then, I guess I'm gonna be happy to nominate my old friend Cedric Creer for this great position.
Awesome. Are there any other nominations?
The nominations be closed.
All right. There's a nomination to appoint Cedric Creer, can we get a motion?
My motion was-
Oh, please vote, I'm sorry.
You just got a little shook up when I asked you.
I'm sorry. That motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Creer. That motion carries, congratulations, Commissioner Krier.
Mr. Chairman, that is final action.
Okay.
I don't believe there's any opportunity to appeal that, Commissioner Krier.
Item number 63, substance participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited, matters within jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time in single, single speakers allowed may be limited. Anyone from the public?
I just want to thank everybody for, for your service and for everything you guys do, thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to say, this is Commissioner Flingus's last night with us. And I've enjoyed serving with you and enjoyed having you down here advising me in the Vice Chair role for the past two years. And I appreciate all the knowledge and wisdom that you brought to our, our commission. And you're going to be missed. And we actually have a plaque for you. I don't, it looks like Commissioner Moody would like to make a couple of comments. And then maybe we can give you this plaque here in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I certainly don't want to step on your toes, but having served as the Vice Chair to Commissioner Flingus while he chaired the Planning Commission was, was my pleasure. And when I came on the Planning Commission more than six years ago, he, I think at the time, was the only other attorney. So I, I watched him closely, listened to what he did, and he has a lot of wisdom. I've always enjoyed the way he, he reasons through things and, and you will be missed. He's got a lot of irons in the fire though, and I know he's going to keep busy and out of trouble, but thank you.
And just brief, just briefly, I have to say to you, Gus Flingus, that I'm so thankful you were the chairman during the pot hearings because I'm going to tell you, you moved those along and got them zoned and stopped people from talking. And you're the only man I know that can speak in front of 700 Greeks and not need a microphone. And I'm going to miss that, but what I love about you the most is how much you loved your brother, how much you love your family, what a great dad you are, what a great husband you are, and what a great friend you've become to my son, Stephen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Krier.
Commissioner Flingus, ECE. Thanks. I just want to say real quick, it's been a pleasure and an honor serving on this board. It's been great working with all of y'all, and I really like the direction Las Vegas is going. And I can just say to staff and the board and the City Council, keep up the good work and keep moving in the direction you're moving because we're a great city and we're becoming greater, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner.
One last, I, I certainly hope that the, the loss of the $80 a month is not going to adversely affect your, your lifestyle.
That effective rate of about a dollar fifty's been going to hurt now.
You're, you're worth every bit of it.
All right, well, this meeting's adjourned. And if we can have all the Planning Commissioners come up front for a few photos.